Good evening, folks. And at five o'clock here, I'll call the meeting of the February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Committee of the Hall meeting to order. I'll start off by reading our land acknowledgements. We are pleased to be here today on the traditional territory of Treaty Six in the Métis homeland. We acknowledge all those who share a deep connection with this land. The city of Beaumont respects the histories, languages and cultures of all Canada's first peoples, whether they be of First Nation, Métis or Inuit descent, and appreciates their presence continues to enrich Canada's vibrant communities. We are all treaty people and the peace treaties bind us all. That moves us to item number two, the adoption of the agenda. I'll ask the clerk if there are any modifications to the agenda at this time.
Thank you, Chair. Administration has no changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you for that. So with that, I'll ask for a committee member to make a motion to move the agenda as presented. Committee member Dowler, we'll go to you there, Champ.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Committee of the Hall adopted February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Committee of the Hall meeting agenda as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll call the question on that. If you can just vote by using your reaction button on the bottom right, please. And I think I can count six. Yep, okay, so that carries unanimously here. And just for the record, Councilor Miller is trying to make it, is having some connectivity issues here. So she will, she will join us when she can. And also I should acknowledge that Councilor Barnhart is not able to be here today. So that was five of us. Moving on to number three, the adoption of the minutes. So we have got the previous Committee of the Hall meeting minutes in the agenda here. I'll ask for a motion for a committee member to move that the minutes be accepted as presented. Councilman Newkirk, I'll get you to move that motion, please.
Yeah, thank you. I move that the Committee of the Hall adopt the January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Committee of the Hall meeting minutes as presented. Thank you.
Any, any questions or comments on that before I call the vote? Anyone got any concerns with those? No, so I'll call the question on the motion. Thanks. So that carries unanimously. Thank you very much. So that moves us over to item number four, presentations and delegations. So, so committee members, you would have seen from the agenda that we have quite a long lineup, an exciting lineup today. And with several folks coming in to provide us some updates. We do have folks who are starting it at set times, so we'll, we'll try to be respectful of those as we work our way through. So that moves us over to item four A Edmonton Global Briefing. And I believe we've got quite a strong contingent of folks joining us here. So I think we have Eddie Wong from the Board of Directors. We have Malcolm Bruce, the CEO. We've got Ria Ganguly, VP of Strategy and Innovation, and Amanda Borman, the Office Manager at Edmonton Global. I'll pass it over to you, Eddie. I think you're, you're going to lead us off here, Champ.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Eddie Wong. I'm very glad to be here today to represent the Board of Edmonton Global. And along with me are my colleagues, Ria and Bruce and Mr. Malcolm Bruce with us tonight. And this is really a delight for us to be here, and I really appreciate the opportunity for more change and communication with you tonight. And what I would do very quickly is start off by sharing with you our vision, the vision that we have with Edmonton Global. But before I do that, I would probably, I would be remiss not to, not to ask Ria and Malcolm to give you the greetings.
Yes, I'm happy. It's really great to meet everybody today. And as Eddie mentioned, I'm the VP of Strategy and Innovation.
Thanks, and thank you for the kind opportunity to present in front of council, Malcolm Bruce, the CEO of Edmonton Global. Thank you.
Thank you, Malcolm. I think Edmonton Global is something that some of you are familiar with, and particularly the vision that we have for this organization. And really, I'm really glad to be here today to once again reiterate the vision and the mandate that we have for Edmonton Global. Edmonton Global is an organization that is built to fundamentally transform and grow the economy of the Edmonton Metropolitan Region. It is a vehicle that we, we will be using and we have actually used to great effect to attract foreign direct investment into region. And through research, benchmarking and in-depth analyses, we have been able to focus on area that we can win, area that we think our competitive advantages would allow us to do a very good job and effective job in projecting the, the brand of Edmonton Global, the brand of the Edmonton Metropolitan Region onto the world stage. And next slide. And the, and the, and the organization Edmonton Global is built on five very fundamental principles. And these are the principles that we hold very dearly, hold very dear in the, in the working of the organization and also in our interaction with the shareholders and our investors. And the first one is that we recognize the interdependency that exists among the different municipalities. And so the first principle of shared investment, shared value is extremely important to us. This is, this is the principle that tied us together. This is also the principle that allows us to compete effectively on the world stage. Because research have shown that the most effective, the most effective way of promoting, promoting and attracting foreign direct investment is really to act as a region. The most important, the most important assets exist at the regional level. So, so Edmonton Global is, is a very effective vehicle and has been an effective vehicle to bring the, the region's asset together and leverage them and represent, represent the region to the world stage in one single effective voice. And the second principle that we built, that we built the organization on is inclusion. The value of having one shareholder, one vote at Edmonton Global, it's, it's a principle that has allowed us to share, to share the values, the visions, as well as the aspirations of all the municipalities in the region. We work as equal partners and Edmonton Global respect everyone equally. And regardless of the size and the size of the contribution to Edmonton Global, we make sure that all the municipalities have an equal voice at the table. And without transparency and accountability is very difficult to build trust. Trust that is, trust that is, that is, that is an attribute that is actually essential for, for the, for the organization and for all the municipal policy to work closely and effectively together. And we, and we, I mentioned, I'm in global, okay. Take these two, take these, take these principles and put it, use it as the cornerstone in our interaction with, with all the EDOs and stakeholders in the region. And particularly to promote transparency and accountability. Edmonton Global has built a number of, a number of processes and tools to allow us to communicate with, with our stakeholders and our partners effectively. The first one that I would, the first one that I would like to mention to everyone is the regional database that we have been able to build with the help of all the municipalities and, and EDOs. And this, this is a regional database allow us to have, allow us to have visibility into the, into the deal pipeline that is happening at Edmonton Global. But it also allows Edmonton Global to communicate with our partners or stakeholders and understand their needs and, and also the circumstances that exist in the municipalities. And this particular database is customized for each shareholders, minute, and municipality. So this is something that EDOs in each municipality can use to, to enhance the effectiveness of the work and to communicate with, with each other. And in addition to the database, we have a number of touchpoints that we, that we, that we, that we use through all the years to communicate with our partners and also with, with the, with the shareholders, things like virtual briefings and board to council meetings like the one that we're having tonight. These are all important touchpoints. They're, these are all important vehicles and a method that we use to ensure that we remain in communication with our shareholders and that we're up to date, we're aware of the needs and the aspiration and the changing circumstances in the municipalities. Because that is the only way that we could work to uphold the next, the next principle that we have at Edmonton Global, and that is a harmonized regional voice. Or we, it is absolutely essential that we speak with one voice when we, when we promote the region. And we speak one, one, one voice when we represent the resources and the opportunities that we have in the region to site selectors as well as potential, potential investors. So, so the idea of working, hunting, hunting in a pack, but also maintaining, maintain a regional mindset is, is a guiding principle at Edmonton Global that we, that we value that, what adhere to, whether we're dealing with stakeholders at home here or whether we're abroad promoting the, promoting the region. And obviously, Beaumont's commitment to regional collaboration, as you have identified in your municipal strategic plan, is something that we really appreciate. It is something that indicate to, to potential investors, to stakeholders, the commitment that our shareholders have made to the region as well as to the organization. And lastly, the respect for local autonomy. This is a fundamental pillar that we have established right from day one at Edmonton Global. We work with your administration, we work with the EDOs, but at the same time, we respect that every region has different, differing needs. And we need to, and we need to respect the differences, and we need to be mindful of the fact that these differences are really why Edmonton Global was created. We have, we have been created as an organization to help everybody work together despite the differences. But at the same time, these differences create a diversity that would make the region a stronger entity on the global stage where we compete for foreign direct investment. And next slide. And in, in the, in the operational realm, Edmonton Global has five different, five different priorities. And when we are guided by these five priorities, whether we're talking about strategy for the organization, building up, building up the internal capacity or in our external communication and marketing plans. These five priorities start with attraction of foreign directed, foreign direct investment and trade. That's really why Edmonton Global was created. We focus on these two particular activities because they are the activities that will ultimately help build regional prosperity. And through these activities, we hope to build a regional brand that is strong enough to resonate globally, to allow us to be recognized as a region of choice for site directors and for potential investors. Because of the fact that we, we have identified strategic sector that we think we can win with, a sector that we think we're competitive in. On these sectors, along, along with the, the five sectors, along with the, along with the different, different, different regional asset that we can, we can bring into, bring to play and, and the regional unity and, and the, and the, and the diversity that we can, we can make clear to our, to our investors, allow us to build support around, around a province, around a country, but also most importantly, project a strong brand on the, on the global stage. And then next, and then next priority partnership is something that I've touched on quickly. And it's a, it's one of those, one of those principles that, that might sound like a cliche, but it's absolutely important. It's, it's very important that we maintain, maintain a strong, deep and evolve and evolving and deepening partnership with our shareholders, with the, with the EDOs, with the council, council members. And this is something that, as a board member, I've been made very much aware of in the last two years. And I can assure you from a personal standpoint that this is really something that the organization from the CEO on down value, value and also pursue on a continual basis. And this partnership is also important because we're not talking about partnership just with the, with the local stakeholder. We have partnership around the world. We, we form partnership with organizations that promote, that promote Canada, Alberta at the provincial and at the national level, such as Invest Canada, Invest Alberta, as well as overseas business associations. Those are partnership with stakeholders that, that we, that we work with and collaborate with for the benefit of the region. And lastly, the priority of organization exists excellent. I know that we have four different priorities and it seems like we have prioritized the priorities themselves. But at the same time, I can assure you that organization excellence is a key, is really a key goal at Edmonton Global. And I can, and every time I talk to, I talk to our, 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 our colleagues at Edmonton Global, I, I can't help but be impressed by how conscientious and how hardworking they are in building up and building up an organization that is well-funded, functioning, and it's an organization that is, that is able to, to help us project, project the region onto the global stage. And what I will do at this point is turn the, turn the presentation over to Malcolm, who'll be talking a little bit more about the, the processes of how we do foreign direct investment and how we promote the different sectors. Malcolm.
Thanks very much, Eddie, and a real pleasure to be able to have this. Next slide, please. I, I think a critical component that we want to just highlight is our approach. And the approach is really, it's a, it's a journey. It's not one and done. And so there's various stages of this approach that take different scale and scope of input from different partners and players within the organization, within the ecosystem, within the partnership network that Eddie so, I thought eloquently explained. So it goes from everything from the initial attraction opportunities, which is the pre-awareness and awareness, through developing them as potential leads, getting them the information they need to make an informed decision, hopefully supporting them through that decision. And then once a decision has been made for an investment here, the aftercare, which is so critical. And I'll give you an example, I think, which is really probably the best illustrative one that we've had to date, which is Polycar, which was a plastics manufacturing facility down in the south end of the region. And their final investment decision was in August, two thousand and nineteen. Their groundbreaking ceremony was in August, two thousand and twenty-one, and we continue to support them through their activities. So it's about the journey for the investors, so they have a very positive experience that we provide that concierge-type service with our partners to enable that company to really take off and develop and build out to what they see as their future here. Because as you know, if they have a very positive experience, they tell two friends who tell two friends, but they also are able to look at expansion opportunities in this region as, if growth is in their future. And I just want to note that we, in terms of this positioning, Edmonton Global ranked twenty-first in the Americas for this type of approach, so last year, which we were pretty happy about. Next slide, please. Now, we also recognize we can't be all things to all people. So when we first established Edmonton Global, the board was very focused on what we are, are good at and where we can be very globally competitive in. So in the end, we looked at twelve overall sectors and we narrowed it down to these four. So energy and clean tech, health and life science, manufactured, advanced manufacturer, food and agriculture, and underpinned by the innovation and technology that's going on and things like the artificial intelligence. Now we further refine these. Next slide, please. As we start to look for that radical transformation of the, of the region in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. So what are we going to become globally known for? And there's really five irons in the fire. One is around hydrogen, which many of you are familiar with. The announcements of our products at one point three billion, the Dow announcement that was made by Fort Saskatchewan and AIHJ is going to be upwards of ten billion dollars. And those are just two announcements that have been confirmed. There has also been at least another six billion dollars of potential announcables that are out on the public street. So the hydrogen opportunity is huge. And it is really about the energy transition that is going on now and the move to a low-carbon economy. And hydrogen is going to be a key component, both for the region in terms of its domestic approach, but also in terms of our market or potential. The other one is in the life science space, particularly around diabetes research that's going on at the University of Alberta and the associated pieces to that. We've created a roadmap that will be published very shortly that really gives us a product to be able to take to market, to get further investment, to helpfully, hopefully drive to a cure by two thousand and thirty-five. And then small molecule drug manufacturing. So as you know, lots of conversations have been around vaccines, mainly in Montreal and Mississauga. We have a proposal that's in and we've been working on for eighteen months with a number of partners here around small molecule or antiviral manufacturing here for the country. That, that exists a gap today in our supply chain. And if we can fill it here in this region, it would be significant. And one of the fun facts a lot of people don't realize is that sixty-seven percent of all the life science companies in Alberta are in the Edmonton Metropolitan Region. So we have this clustering effect backed by this tremendous capacity in our talent production and our post-secondaryes that really gives us an ability to leverage this to create something very special around a clustering effect around life sciences. Food and agriculture, you're in the, you're in a, in a great location in the region in terms to see the expansiveness of our agriculture capacity here. What we lack, though, is ambition in agriculture. Essentially ninety-five percent of everything we produce here gets shipped out unrefined. So that's what that one-to-one number is at the bottom. For every dollar of farm sales, we essentially have one dollar of value add. BC, it's three dollars for every, for value add to every one dollar of farm sales, and same with Ontario. The Dutch are thirty-plus to one. So they have four point four million acres under agriculture and they produce a hundred and fifty billion dollars of GDP. We have one point seven million acres under agriculture in this region and we produce eight point six billion dollars of GDP. So if we move that one to one to two to one, it would add another four point six billion dollars into our GDP on an annual basis. So that's where we believe there's a ton of potential in the food and egg space, as you're well aware from where you're located. Global logistics, we really highlight the connectedness that we have. Both CNCP, as you know, connect here, the connectedness of the airport to the circumfoller routes, particularly to Asia, the Canamix Road that starts here and goes all the way down to Mexico. And then, of course, you know, all roads lead to Moscow, while all pipelines lead to Edmonton. And so there's a tremendous amount of opportunity in terms of our connectedness, both to the global marketplace, but also to the larger domestic in Canada and North American markets. And we will be launching Port Alberta, a relaunch of Port Alberta. And we've been working very closely with one of the largest supply chain companies in the globe to create really a visioning around what the port can be in time. And then finally, artificial intelligence, machine learning, specifically reinforced learning. And the University of Alberta is ranked number three globally for artificial intelligence. But what's really important is the application of artificial intelligence into our various sectors that enhance and optimize what they are. So one of the things that, for example, the global logistics company we're talking to right now, it wasn't so much as our geographic location, it was about the expertise in artificial intelligence that really drove them to, to really start the conversations with us. How do you optimize supply chain efficiencies by application of artificial intelligence? Okay, back to you, Eddie.
Thank you, Malcolm. I think Malcolm's, Malcolm's point on logistics and artificial intelligence are really well, well taken. Because as we move forward, these are two assets that would, that would be extremely important for any, any region or any country that want to compete for foreign direct investment. And Beaumont location, being so close to the logistics, the logistic hub of Edmonton, close to the CN Intermodal Station, the airport, but as, as well as the Beaumont Innovation Park, these are assets that Edmonton Global can certainly promote to the world. And, and they are going to be extremely valuable assets in the regional economic development of the, of the Edmonton Metropolitan Region. And not to mention the fact that the population of Beaumont is young, it's educated, and these are absolutely important assets going forward. And so, so when we, when we look at the overall strategies for Edmonton Global, Beaumont is certainly right into the thick of it when we look at the, the future of, of the new economy, the future of, of an economy that relies on logistics, on AI. Next slide, please. And then we do, we do look forward to working very closely with, with Beaumont in, in the promotion of the Metropolitan Region in the post-COVID era in particular. Because as, as international travel resumes, Edmonton Global would be able to receive more visitors and also be able to do more outreach into, into the world. And many of the assets that we just mentioned in, in terms of what Beaumont has to offer the world, we'll be able to, we'll be able, we'll be able to showcase those. And when we, and when we, and when we work closely enough with your EDOs to identify the regional assets and so on, I hope that, and we do believe that, we'll be able to identify more opportunities going forward. Malcolm talked about food processing, that's certainly one of them, and AI. And these are all industries that will rely on education and, and, and youth. And so Edmonton, Edmonton Global is, it's a stand ready to help Beaumont, whether it's a strategic client, not only in terms of how we, how we move forward, but also in terms of aftercare of investors. Once we've brought investors into the region, Edmonton Global is also there to, to support you in terms of, in terms of making or translating any interest of investors into, into an actual investment project. Next slide, please. And earlier, earlier, we, we touched on the fact that we, we value, we value original partnership. We wanted to speak with one boards. And that really is, that really is, it's, it's important as an investment strategy as well because the value proposition that, that we offer to the world is that of, of a region that stands together, a region that is, that is united, a region that is able to offer an ecosystem to the, to the investors. Because Malcolm talked about, talked about supply chain advantages for Beaumont. And in the supply chain world, ecosystem is, is everything. What ecosystem can you offer, offer your, your investors? So that really is, that really is the, is, is the reason why a regional approach is so powerful in, in terms of, in terms of attracting foreign investors. I know that I'm, I'm speaking to the converted because you guys have made a regional, a regional development that one of your strategic, strategic priorities. And I just want to commend you on that because research of some, and also many experts have told us when it comes to attracting foreign, foreign, foreign investment, it's what happens at the local level that matters. The local asset, the local support from, 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 from the, from the, from the population, the locals, the support from the local government. And those, those are things that, things that are important to, to attacking foreign, foreign investors. And next slide, please.
Eddie, before you, before you jump in, maybe I just, just want to recognize that, I know you've got about five slides left. We're coming up close to the end of the time here. So I want to provide a space for, for folks to ask some questions as well. So I'll get you to, to respectfully move through, through these last few slides here.
I think last slide, I think the next slide, I think I'll just quickly mention the, the partnership that we have within the ecosystem. I think that, that we can probably stop the presentation there because beyond that, it's, it would be redundant. So this, this slide indicates to, to, to us the, the different partnership that we've been able to build within the, within the system, with, with external, with external stakeholders and partners. And so, so this is, this is one of those roles that, one, one of those important roles that Edmonton Global can play in terms of being a, being the bridge between locality as well as, as a form, as form, as foreign partners and the potential investors. And this two lines basically give us a very quick view of what Edmonton Global have been able to achieve. And in the, in the, in the last two years, we've been able to support one point seven billion dollars in investment and help, and help create twenty-six hundred construction jobs. And hopefully out of these investments, we have more than four hundred permanent jobs. I think these are some of the quick hits that we could, we can share with you tonight. And we will continue to work with you in terms of, in terms of what we can do to make Beaumont, to help Beaumont in this economic goal and this strategy. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. I, no, you did a great job. I, I didn't mean to cut you right down to, but you hit five thirty bang on. So, so appreciate that. I, I do want to, you know, we've got some new counselors here as well. And so I wanted to make sure there was an opportunity for them. This is kind of their, their first briefing as well from, from Edmonton Global. So maybe I'll open it up if any of the, the newer counselors had, had any questions on this first around Edmonton Global itself. And then we'll, we'll open it up for the rest of folks. Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Cook. Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Cook.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation as well. It was I learned quite a bit on some of the things you guys spoke of, especially Malcolm, in regards to you spoke to the us having a lot of potential in the food and egg space. I'm curious, can you expand a little bit on some of the investments that can be made that would expand on that and that would expand us from the one to one ratio?
So one of the things the regional approach does is allows us to look at the gaps in the supply chain for those particular sectors and then build business cases around those gaps that we can then produce products that we go hunting for. So a great case is pulse fractionation. So what we've said is that we ship out raw product, but if we're into the protein space and we want to create more value add, we need pulse fractionators here to be able to do it. And then the off takes from the pulse fractionation, it's not only the protein, but it's also things like starch. And then starch can be used in other products. Additionally, what what there's been a really close blend in 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 the food byproducts or outcakes are also nutraceuticals. So if you think about the derivatives coming out of CBD or or other types of proteins that are moving into the nutraceutical space, we're starting to see those crop up as well. So this is where, you know, on your new lands that you have or on in your innovation park, these kind of opportunities is what investors are looking for to establish where they could build that value add piece, because all the inputs are here within the region. So I think that's really where some of that opportunity is. So it's not just food and egg. I think your innovation space, as you as you've proven on your on your remote pilot bus testing and things that you did right on Main Street was tremendous, right? It shows that innovation, it shows the leadership in that space. And I think the work you're doing on the ten gig broadband initiative is going to be a game changer. I really do. I think it'll be a game changer.
Perfect. Thank you. Just one more question, if that's okay. Okay. So how were projects decided on, kind of determined, I guess? At what point does Edmonton Global come in? When we talk about promoting the region to the world and and when we do have promotions or interests come in, how are the different cities decided on?
What we do is we've created this thing called the compact, which Beaumont is a signature, and it's a really a series of protocols of how we're going to work together. So in there, it lays out, for example, if an interested client comes to us and says we're looking for X, Y, and Z to create an opportunity, we will send that out to everybody in our network. So all the EDOs from the from the shareholder groups get that. And then they opt in or opt out. But I will also say it is client driven. So sometimes the clients will come in and say, we want this specific outcome at this specific location. So then we'll just deal directly with that that individual municipality. On the reverse side, though, we're we recognize there are going to be opportunities that come to your jurisdiction without our knowledge of it. And we are great and and thankful for that. But if you need our help, we're happy to help in a supporting role or whatever role you need us to be in, whether it could be data, it could be producing something that you need. But otherwise, we are really a service provider to you as you as you build out your needs in terms of your own opportunities.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate all that insight. Thank you.
Great. I I don't see any other hands up here. Actually, no, I got one here. Councilor Miller, we'll go to you for for our last question before we move on here.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I just had a quick question. I see that a lot of what you were presenting also was based on alignment with the previous strategic plan. So how does that play into the fact that like we haven't finished our new plan for the next four years? Will you revisit that and then look at what aligns for future projects with the new strategic plan?
So yes, the short answer is yes. Well, we'll obviously, we like to align efforts, and I think you'll find that our strategic plan is fairly broad. And it doesn't limit us, it just focuses us. So there may be things in your strategic plan. Let's say you decide aerospace is a sector that you want to focus on. It's not a sector that the Edmonton Metropolitan Region necessarily sees strong strength at a regional level, but there are lots of opportunity in aerospace. So we're not going to say no to it if it comes to our front door. So I just think that what we're saying is we're very focused, but we're not constraining in how we approach any kind of economic development that we may have.
Perfect. Thank you, Malcolm.
Good question. Thanks, Ashley. All right, we'll we'll leave it there. You know, Malcolm, you talked about the the lower carbon, the transition to the lower carbon. I'll offline, I'll have a conversation around carbon capture and and those opportunities, not just hydrogen, but we'll save that for for another time. So we'll leave it there. I'll ask if there's a committee member willing to to make a motion. I'll ask the clerk to to put it up to to receive that presentation as information. See, Councilor Tissier.
Yeah, I'll move that the committee of the whole received the February fifteenth, twenty twenty two Edmonton Global briefing as information.
Thank you for that. And I'll call a question if you could just vote using the reaction button there. All right, now I feel like I'm here here trying to count the green dots. I feel your pain there, Bill, but I see seven, so that that does carry unanimously. Eddie, Malcolm, Maria, thank you very much for for coming in today. Great to see the progress and and really great to get an update for for our new counselors and you know, hopefully we'll have some some nice projects to talk to you about in the very near future. So I'll I'll leave it at that, but we'll catch you guys later on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us over to item four B, update to the winter city strategy. So first off, let me just apologize to our friends from Dialogue Consultants. We're a little bit behind here, eight minutes. So we'll try to get back on track. But I understand Johannes Wong is is gonna introduce our friends Jordan and Jill to our table here today. So I'll pass it over to you, Johannes.
Thank you very much, Chair and Counselors and Consulate. And greetings to to members of the committee on behalf of the the project team, that includes myself and Emily Samster, a long range planner. We are excited to be here actually to provide you with an update to our one of our interesting project, the winter city strategy. The strategy's desire actually is to hopefully investigate and promote a shift in community perceptions of winter. Try to incorporate, at the end of the day, some urban design elements for built environment. And probably the most important thing is to promote a winter loving culture in the city. At the end, you know, we want to create a positive winter experience for Beaumont. So and now I want to take the opportunity to introduce you to Jill, Jill Robertson and Jordan Reimer. They are consultants from Dialogue Design, who are helping us to develop these strategies. And without further ado, I want to pass on to them to make the presentations to the committee on the winter city strategies. And after that, we are happy to answer any questions from the committee. So to you, Jordan and Jill.
Thank you so much, Johannes. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, counselors, and members of the committee of the whole for inviting us here to share an update on the progress of the winter city strategy. We're really excited. It's a perfect time of year as it's a bit of a dismal February day, so we hope you can get really excited about our progress to date. As Johannes mentioned, my name is Jill Robertson. I'm a partner at Dialogue, and I'm here with Jordan Reimer, who is our project manager. And we're going to talk about the progress we've made to date on the winter city strategy. We're going to go through the presentation fairly quickly, talk about the background and purpose of the project, the process to date, which includes research and some great public engagement. And then we're going to share how that's informed the development of the draft table of contents, which is really outlining of the content that you're going to see in the final plan. It's organized by key focus areas, which with each focus area broken into multiple big ideas. We're going to close with our anticipated next steps and opportunities to help promote this project to the wider city. And we're really excited to get some feedback from you on on how we've been doing so far. So I'm going to pass it off to Jordan, who's going to do the heavy lifting for the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Jill, and thank you, committee members, for this opportunity to present. I'm personally excited about this presentation. It's a cause that's very near and dear to my heart, as someone that's been through many Edmonton area winters. As Johannes has probably stated better than what I can, the winter city strategy was first identified in Beaumont's municipal development plan. And as we've been going along this project process, we've identified what we think is the crux of the purpose of this strategy, and that is to bring the city residents, local businesses, cultural organizations together to transform Beaumont's relationship with winter and make it a safer, more accessible, and more fun season for all. We truly believe that the development of the strategy marks an important time for the city, both staff, organizations, businesses, and residents, to come together and reassess their relationship with winter. Everyone in Beaumont has a role to play in creating a vibrant winter city. And this strategy, I believe, will serve as a manifestation and starting point for these efforts. As we all know, winter is an unavoidable aspect of life in Beaumont. Although the season continues to change and surprise us, this recent warm bit of weather being an example, life in Beaumont has periods of short days, cold weather, snow and ice. Winter city is sort of a global thinking that is emerging in northern climates. That is, in essence, a transformative shift in perspective, one that embraces winter for its unique opportunities. Long nights become opportunities for dazzling light displays and stargazing and nights around the fire. Lizardy days become welcomed and anticipated for all the potential snow has for fun outdoor activities. The Beaumont Winter City Strategy is aiming to be a document that represents and guides the community-wide affirmation to take action and embrace winter, making it more safe and fun for everyone. This project is essentially broken down into three steps. Step one is about learning all we can about winter cities and all we can about Beaumont. We've done a comprehensive background review, existing conditions review, and public and stakeholder engagement. All this information put us in a position to begin drafting the strategy. This started with the creation of the table of contents, which you later see. This will be further fleshed out with more inputs from public and stakeholder engagement along the way. Our final step is a review and hopefully an approval from you counselors. As mentioned, step one was all about gathering information on best practices across other cities and the local conditions here in Beaumont. This has provided the information needed to allow our project team to move forward with the foundational understanding of winter cities, what Beaumont can capitalize on, and what Beaumont requires in order to improve its relationship with winter. The attached background report opens up of case studies, case studies of winter cities, both near and far from Beaumont. We looked at examples in Canada, Scandinavia, and even Asia. And together, we were able to get some really interesting perspectives, both traditional and emerging, that can help inform some ideas here for Beaumont. We also had the honor and privilege of talking with three superstar local winter city champions from Winter City Edmonton, the University of Alberta, and the city Francophone. These people have immense but diverse experience in championing winter city efforts, both in government, academic, and community-based organizations. These are also summarized in the background report. Another aspect of our background research was an existing conditions review, which consisted of a policy review, a tour of Beaumont, and an internal working group session with wonderful members of different departments in the city of Beaumont. This allowed us to build out a strengths, challenges, opportunities, and threats analysis for Beaumont's current state and how its relationship with winter is going. This is also summarized in the background report. To give you some cool notes on our background research, I think it can really be broken down into five key points that you're seeing on screen right now. The first being design. We heard this from everyone. Winter cities begin at good city design. This means applying winter city best practices at the neighborhood, city block, and individual property scales. Well-designed cities are the foundation for which good winter city lifestyles and activities can happen. The second we really focused on was mobility. Getting around in winter requires special attention. As we all know, with this crazy winter of freezing and thawing, ice and snow are often more often the deterrents from completing a trip from walking or biking than the cold weather. And as these freeze thaw cycles are expected to continue to increase, separate bike infrastructure and effective snow removal programs are all the more important to achieve our active transportation goals. We also heard a lot about community building. And good winter cities work with key community organizers and businesses to create opportunities for residents to gather and participate in activities together. The city of Beaumont doesn't need to do all the heavy lifting itself. It can empower existing community capital to create wonderful winter events in winter communities. This includes big annual events to smaller scale, regularly planned activities. We also heard a lot about winter recreation. Winter brings about the opportunities for some very unique recreational activities. And it's essential for winter cities to provide a range of these. Not everyone likes participating in shinny games and tobogganing, although I certainly do. So it's also important to provide more relaxing activities next to those for people that just want to sit around a fire and drink hot chocolate. And the other one is equity. And this is something that I think Beaumont can be unique in its strategy with, as this is just an emerging field. But the recognition that the burden of winter is not felt the same by everyone. People who are new to northern climates, people of low income, and those are reduced mobility, as well as people with other factors may find winter more difficult than others. And we seek through this winter strategy to identify ways that the city can support these people. After our background research, we went out and engaged the public and stakeholders. This was a really exciting time, and our project team had to be nimble with the evolving COVID situation, but I think we got some excellent results. I think the highlight of this was our winter walk activity. We installed several engagement boards throughout central Beaumont, encouraged residents to go around and take a nice winter walk on a, I think it was pretty, I think it was pretty nice weather actually during that period, and respond to the prompting questions on the engagement board. There was also an online survey available at the same time, and we were super floored and excited to see that we had over a hundred responses to that survey. And during this time, we started something called the Business and Cultural Collaborative Committee. We identified key business and cultural leaders from Beaumontan area and brought them together for an evening of brainstorming that mostly centered around how the city can support their initiatives and how they can support each other in transforming Beaumont's winter relationship. This committee will be meeting in the future as well. Our key takeaways from the public engagement are in the What We Heard report. There is also attached this agenda item. But I'll go over some of the key highlights right now. As I'm sure all the all the counselors on this call are aware, snow removal and lighting on pathways were the biggest thing that we heard. As we know, the continuing freezing and thawing of all the snow here, snow removal is key and a big priority on people's minds. Beaumont's amazing pathway system, people also commented on not just the need for additional functional lighting on these pathways, but the opportunity that comes with decorative lighting, picking out key spots along these trails to create memorable places through playful and even interactive lighting installations. A lot of people mentioned balancing regular activities and big events. Big events are awesome for attracting visitors and creating highlights in people's winter seasons. But regular activities like a weekly shinny night or a book club or other smaller community-led initiatives are really what the key is to getting people outside during winter and meeting their neighbors as opposed to just staying indoors. Similar to our background research, we also heard about the importance of providing activities for all. Again, I think really what this looks like is making a nice place to sit by the fire, maybe with a vendor that's selling hot drinks next to the shinny rink. So someone that isn't into hockey or skating can still, you know, watch their kids play hockey. And finally, we heard a lot about winter public and active transportation. And this really drove home the point that investments in these networks, as Beaumont continues to grow, will not just promote its summertime use, but it will also promote its wintertime use. From all of this amazing input that we gathered, we've come up with a draft table of contents for you that you're seeing right in front of you. As Jill mentioned before, this is broken up into three focus areas, which are the big points here. There are winter design, winter mobility, and winter communities. These focus areas are broken up into smaller big ideas that are going to organize all the content in the strategy. Winter design talks about the neighborhood scale, the city level urban design, and individual properties. Winter mobility mostly just talks about active transportation and public transportation. And this was based on a lot of what we were reading and a lot of what we heard from the public. Winter communities is broken up into winter equity, winter programming, and winter wellness. This uh this is an exciting presentation because it marks the end of step one in our project process. And we now get to begin drafting the strategy. Our next steps is even tomorrow, where we are meeting with the internal working group with members from different departments of the city to discuss the table of contents and begin creating ideas to help flush that out. We will be then launching into public engagement number two, which we'll talk more about shortly. And then it's write pencils to paper or my fingers to the keyboard. And we're going to start drafting this thing and I'm pretty excited about that. So there's upcoming public engagements and this is just a wonderful opportunity for all the members of this committee to go out to Four Seasons Park on Family Day. We'll be there from one to four thirty PM. The Beaumont Events Department's been gracious in letting us have a Winter Cities booth alongside a lot of other fun activities, where we're going to be gathering feedback and raising awareness about the project. And we'll be doing another online survey, which will be running from February twenty first to March seventh. This is another great opportunity to get feedback on that table of contents and start getting some ideas for the strategy. And we really encourage all the councillors to, through their channels, promote this engagement and get residents of Beaumont out and talking about winter cities. And with that, that concludes our presentation. I'd love to open up the remaining time we have for any questions.
Thank you, Jordan. Great presentation and really exciting initiative for sure. So thank you very much for that. You mentioned folks who, you know, didn't necessarily grow up in a climate. I grew up on a beach. So certainly looking forward to seeing how you can help me enjoy Beaumont in the winter a bit better. With that though, I'll open it up for questions of folks for Jordan here or any of other speakers here. Not seeing anything right now. Jordan, just maybe, oh, here we go. Here's councillor Ben Newkirk. Go with you there, mate.
Hey, but thank you. I just wanted to talk or maybe have you talk a little bit more about the policy piece. You put on page forty eight in the report. You talked through the policy and specific bullet point that I found that I hopefully you can elaborate on is, it says Beaumont currently does not have sufficient development controls on the neighborhood scale and building scale to encourage winter design strategies outside of Centreville. Just hoping you could expand on that one a little bit. I'm not quite, I want to know the angle and some of the thought process around that. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. I think that's a great point of discussion. I think Beaumont has a really good start on winter city design with their Centreville guidelines. But there's opportunity to, you know, sort of continue that encouragement of proper winter city design on areas outside. So either through neighborhood level, when you're looking at area structure plan approvals, there's some really good winter city best practices, like locating an urban center that's in a lockable distance, making sure that development patterns maximize sunlight and minimize wind tunnels that can be applied there. And as well as as other areas in Beaumont continue to develop with the growth you guys are seeing, having development controls both at the neighborhood level and at the development permit level that encourage winter city design best practices, I think is a big opportunity for Beaumont, especially as it's such a growing city.
Yeah, and then building, I'll tell you where I'm going in a second. So building on that, you made note of catch basins, basically that water is designed to drain across sidewalks and then go into catch basins. And obviously that creates icy issues and, you know, we're using pounds and pounds of salt and breaking people's, you know, whatever, chipping ice, you know, it's real chore. So that was identified in here. And then it was also identified in, you know, in your talk about snow removal. I believe you said something about, you know, moving the snow to the side of the road and blocking catch basins. And, you know, we have made a shift, you acknowledged in there to, you know, collecting off the side of the road and hauling the snow away. But one of the things I didn't see in here that I thought might be, or maybe I missed it, is the actual, and here's where I'm going, is the actual physical width of the streets to give more room because we are a winter city. Talk to me about that.
Yeah, that's a great point. And personally, I don't live in Beaumont, but in Edmonton, we are dealing with that conversation right now with windrows and how a meter of right-of-way of street gets taken away in the in the winter. And I think there's a delicate balance that needs to be played there. Increasing widths of the streets might be a good solution for, at some angles, it would definitely allow for easier two-way traffic. But I think this needs to be explored more in the strategy drafting phase about how we deal with that snow that's reducing the right-of-way because increasing the standard for roads to be wider has other negative impacts on pedestrian connectivity, especially when it's increasing the distance of potentially icy roads for residents to walk in.
It's definitely, oh, sorry, Jordan, I'm just going to jump in. It's definitely a consideration that's commonly voiced in other winter cities. And I think that's something that there are a variety of strategies that we can work with your administrative team as we get into the strategy drafting. There's operational considerations about how you deal with the snow, whether it is stored in situ or it's trucked away versus do you do something like widening the roads or is there the provision of a green boulevard? And understanding that some of these things you can deal with right now, like operational considerations and then some of the things like capital changes to streetscape standards take take time to roll out and can be integrated into new development. So we'll work with your staff and with yourselves to understand what is the best solution that's going to work for Beaumont's goals around this issue.
Yeah, and just last, last comment there, Chair, on this one is Beaumont has this phenomenon where people don't park in their garages. They like to park on the street and do other fun things with their garages. And that leads to parking considerations and challenges year round, which is exacerbated in winter with, you know, and as noted, we have started to collect all the snow and grind it up and haul it away. So, you know, we're kind of keeping the street widths wide. But the next thing that happens in neighborhoods is, you know, you put homes closer together, which, you know, that's what's happening in portions of our neighborhood. Then you still need trees, you still need crosswalks, you still need hydrants. And then you have driveways. So there's, you know, the areas for people to park along the side of the street keep decreasing. And what it's doing is that is also leading to its own pedestrian challenges. So while others were maybe thinking about the fun things of this winter strategy, I stopped at this policy page and I was like, huh, what do we do here? So looking forward to, you know, you guys getting into the weeds a little bit with administration on this page forty eight policy. So thank you.
Those are great comments. Thank you. And it's exactly the level of detail that we're going to start to resolve in the next stages of the process.
Great. Thanks, Stephen. And I want to congratulate you on getting road widths into almost every discussion we have. I know it's a passion of yours and this is a perfect place to have the discussion. So well done there, mate. Councillor Tissier, you got your hand up there. Where are you?
Thanks, Chair. And thanks a lot for the presentation. One thing I did really like to see is three different types of surveys. Like you got the Business and Cultural Committee, so you get, you know, right down to the ground of what they want and the survey and the walking survey. So that was cool to see. One thing that's mentioned here is make Centreville a winter destination. I think that's the best idea. Like I want to see more things happening in the winter. And I look at last year's event for Beaumont Days when we shut down, you got to shut down downtown and the amount of people and the amount of businesses that were there was unbelievable. Four Seasons is great too, but it's so spread out and it's hard to get a good amount of vendors in there. When little downtown, that small street can be shut down, doesn't affect emergency response too much. It brings so many people in a congregated area and that's what it's kind of built for. So really interested in to see where this goes. So thanks again. More comments, I guess, but yeah, appreciate it.
Absolutely. That area is ripe with potential. That's already been realized and would love to see even more in the in the winter in that area. I think that'd be a cool area to explore for sure.
Thanks, councillor Tissier. That's where I was going. Was around that Centreville area and, you know, in the What We Heard reporter does speak to the business community, talking about, you know, maximizing that space. And so, you know, two years ago, we did have a kind of a town square on our capital program. We approved it as you guys are aware and that kind of fell off the radar. But what I keep hearing from folks is exactly what councillor Tissier talked about. Four Seasons is great, but it's too spread out. We need a destination to go to and that's the spot. So, yeah, Jordan and Joe, you guys got your work cut out for you to kind of present this back in a way that we can adopt it. But yeah, I'm really looking forward to seeing those results. I see councillor Millie, you've got your hand up there, mate.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And I really love this presentation too. I think it's exciting to see what other cities and towns have done, looking at these pictures and reading about some of those, you know, like the long skating rinks and outdoor activities are really, really exciting. I am fully a fan of your one comment that, you know, not everybody maybe wants to go skate on an outdoor rink, but they certainly may want, like me as a mom watching my kids. I don't really want to be out there skating, but I want to be in the vicinity. So if there's like something in the proximity where I can, you know, relax and not freeze my butt off per se, I think that's a really, that's a really cool plan. That being said, I would like to make sure that we don't lose sight of what we do have for facilities in Beaumont. And we really try to improve, you know, the current facilities that we have and always try to make those better as well. Because I think a lot of them are great, but we can always, we can make some substantial improvements to make them, you know, more quality for the residents. And yeah, so I'm really excited to see how those both come together, both of those initiatives. And this is, this is great. I love it.
Yeah, those are really great comments. And I think we're really thinking about it as how can we develop a plan that's going to leverage existing assets and really look at them through the lens of how to maximize use throughout the winter? And then what maybe would be on the wish list for future? The one thing I think that is great about the time that you're undertaking this study and it's really a congratulations to your staff on that is as we come out of the pandemic, where, you know, people have become accustomed now to hanging out outside longer year round. When we couldn't gather with friends indoors, we started to do it outside. So this is really a great time to leverage some of that momentum around being outside throughout the year. And so we really see that starting to help lay the groundwork for leveraging both those existing assets that you have in the community.
Thank you for that. Mayor, you had a question or comment there?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just a brief one. I agree with the previous speakers from council. Centreville to us is a hidden gem. I've had several friends who've been to Quebec, Quebec City, I believe, during their, I think they call it Carnaval, their festival there. And they say it's absolutely phenomenal. And with Beaumont having a significant French heritage to it, I'd love to see what we do for have Beaumont's version of Carnaval, or if that's the right name for it, I think it is Carnaval. But I think it'd be great to have a Beaumont version. Centreville is just ideal for it. So I'm looking forward to us being able with your assistance in this report. Making it some kind of fruition. Beaumont's version would be great. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. And thanks, Mr. Mayor. We had a lot of talk about Carnaval in our public engagement and were encouraged by a few stakeholders to think even bigger, like what is Beaumont's story? Carnaval is so rooted in Quebec City's history, but Beaumont itself is an interesting history to itself. So how can we make something that is also like wonderful in the winter and also authentically telling Beaumont's story? So I think that's definitely something we're going to explore in the next stage.
Thanks, Jordan. I'm with the mayor. Any excuse for a party downtown, I think, is where he's going. But no, that's great. And really appreciate the work that you folks, the dialogue of Dan, working with with administration, really good update, exciting to see the next steps. But I think we'll leave it there. I don't see any further hands up. So with that, I'll ask the clerk to put up a motion and then to see if we could, is there a councillor willing to accept this report as information? Councillor Tissier.
Thank you, Chair. I move that February fifteen, twenty twenty-two Winter City Strategy Update Report be received for information. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Working overtime tonight on these motions. Appreciate it. With that, I'll call the question. Folks want to use their reaction button there. And that carries unanimously. So again, thank you very much. We're really excited for the next step. And we appreciate you guys coming in tonight.
Thank you so much for your time and your questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All righty, with that, we're going to take a short break. It's six oh seven here. So we'll come back at six fifteen, just quarter past the hour, give folks a chance to reset. All right, we'll call back the meeting to order, the committee, the whole of February the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two at six fifteen here. So next up, we move on to item four C, Introduction to the Urban Forest Management Strategy. And I believe we have Lenore Turner here to introduce consultants here from WSP. So I'll pass it over to you, Lenore.
So hi, hello to the councillors and the mayor and everyone present today. Thank you for your time. So we're going to do the Beaumont Urban Forest Management Strategy, the project introduction today. So for the project team, for the city, I'm Lenore Turner. I'm the environmental lead. And I'm the city contact and the project manager for this project. And then Drew Ramsey and Darren Delazy are also involved in this project. Drew is the team leads for parks and Darren Delazy is the operations resource inspector. So they both have them to thank for all the tree-related work in the city currently. And they provided expertise and information for this and will going forward. And then the consultants are WSP and we have Nola Kill-Martin and she's the co-presenter today. And she is the project manager and engagement specialist. And Jordan Guleetz, who is a technical advisor, and Kevin Fulmer, who is a project planner. And they are here for questions at the end as well. And Nola will also be presenting. Darren Delazy is also present from the city and he'll be available for questions at the end. So in terms of the urban forest management strategy, in terms of strategic alignment, this strategy aligns with the pillars of livability and connecting with citizens that are outlined in the municipal strategic plan. The development of an urban forest tree program was listed as an action item under environmental stewardship within the municipal development plan. And then within the environmental master plan, the creation of an urban forest strategy was also listed as a key implementation action item. So for today, for the agenda, we are going to have a project introduction and background, discuss the meeting goals. For today, what is the strategy about? Where are we now? What have we heard? We'll present some new council information, which includes tree inventory and resources for the city, the current processes for new requests and complaints with the city, discuss the gaps in our management approach, and then we'll talk about some next steps, including engagement touchpoints and beyond summer twenty twenty-two. And then we'll have a quick discussion and question answer period. So now I'll pass it to Nola. Oh, sorry, one more slide. Goals for today, provide council with an overview of the project, including key priorities, challenges and opportunities. So currently, we're at the beginning phases of the strategy development. So we are presenting just the introductory portion. We'll talk about tree-related information for council, next step for public engagement, and we'll discuss opportunities for further involvement with this project.
Great. Thanks. Thanks very much, Lenore. And thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for your time this evening. As Lenore mentioned, I'm Nola Kill-Martin. I'm a senior planner with WSP. So effectively, what the strategy about is about is it's the management to create a proactive plan to capture all of the benefits that an urban forest provides in the city. The intent is to improve the resiliency of tree assets to contribute to a more sustainable approach to tree asset lifecycle management in Beaumont. The opposite condition is a highly reactive, underfunded and under-resourced approach to managing the tree inventory, which is continuously growing as the city expands. So we'll be utilizing forestry principles, tree inventory analysis, planting and protection standards and tree care as a few of the items that will be included in the overall strategy. Lenore, you can go to the next slide. Thanks. So the deliverables that'll be included. So the deliverables that'll be included in the strategy will focus on establishing targets for canopy growth, species diversity, integration with other green corridor connections, as Lenore addressed in the environmental master plan, other environmental strategies, as well as maintenance, preservation, and improving public awareness and understanding of the urban forest, and how it works, and how it needs to function healthily. Separate from the strategy but married to the process is asset management. As noted in the info sheet, that was part of the submitted package, the cost associated with the time of planting can account for approximately 80% or more of the total maintenance related to cost during the life of a tree. So unmanaged tree assets represent a loss of municipal services and benefits. Due to time constraints today, we're not going to go through all of the amazing things and the benefits, you know, that trees can do and that trees provide to municipalities. But we're going to give it a bit more of a financial focus today, because we're limited in how much time we have with you. So on the key elements of what is in the asset management plan. So, you know, the strategy, again, it's the plan of action outlining our goals and targets in percentage increases and in specific locations such as parks or streets. The asset management plan is an important piece of the municipal decision-making framework, with a longer-term perspective to achieve lower total costs by making small but timely investments for the entire lifecycle as trees mature and age across the city's inventory. As an asset class, city trees are subjective distresses that are unique to the urban environment and exist in areas where they have potential to represent a safety and liability issue for the city. Trees that are not maintained can develop an irregular structure, which is susceptible to wind load and shearing during severe weather events. There are also other concerns like diseases and those kinds of issues. So asset management establishes an inspection and pruning cycle in line with industry standards and practices and city resources to prevent premature deterioration of this asset class. So we can go to the next one. So project schedule, just a light touch here. In 2020, the city completed a tree inventory, which Lenore will speak to the elements of that work in a few moments. Last summer, WSP was engaged for development of the strategy. And with the election in November, the project team decided to keep all project communications internal until we could introduce this new project to council. So staff workshops were held in late summer. And this spring, we'll be advancing public engagement and strategy development. So we'll be excited to come back to you then. Later on, in this whole process, associated projects will involve budget forecasting and asset management plans to maintain resources. So we can go to the next slide, please. So our staff workshops, the purpose of these workshops is to hear from staff directly. So kind of said, you know, from policy to pruning, what are the challenges and opportunities faced by administration? So staff from the planning and development groups, environment, infrastructure, operations, engineering, economic development, and protective services participated in these discussions. We received a great deal of insight and information. So we can only touch on a fraction of it now, but all of us will come together when we produce what we heard report for you, once we go to the public as well. So general umbrellas would be enforcement, growth intensification, and resources as some key challenges that administration faces. So within resources, for example, enforcing protection of mature trees during construction, and then staff being able to perhaps find, if necessary, according to the value of the tree asset, knowing what that value is. From a bylaw standpoint, there's no specific tool in place for the city to issue warnings or for the escalate tree disease problems should they arise. There's the conflict of increasing dwelling density and improving affordability, which are completely reasonable city goals, but then also having the appropriate space for trees on private property. There are space constraints for tree area related to roadway design, which came up in the last presentation as well. So looking at those roadway design standards and/or finding places and spaces to replace a tree on public property where one may be damaged or removed unintentionally. In terms of, you know, the public education piece, creating awareness of disease and control of the hazards to different trees on private property, which can put pressure on city trees. Also pruning and cutting public or planting the wrong kind of tree in the wrong place, in short. So at the moment, you know, the feedback is that care and maintenance is reactionary, which is why a strategy is needed. It's difficult for the administration to plan ahead due to budgeting and staff limitations. And then this also ties into, you know, climate impacts and some of the weather fluctuations that have been happening. This is much harder on trees and their, you know, ability to survive and thrive, and necessitates changes in species selection and care as that lifecycle carries on. So we can go on to the opportunities. So fortunately, there are often as many opportunities as there are challenges regarding water management. There are potential amendments to be made in the zoning bylaw with technical requirements for rezoning. So overland drainage, for example, that refers to hydraulic network analysis, that's to ensure that current water courses or streams can continue to reach existing tree stands, so they're not dried out essentially. We can also look at, you know, different kinds of permit issues to ensure survivability as development occurs around trees, there are different protection strategies. There are, you know, implementation tools like soil cells, tree vaults, you know, looking at survivability conditions in difficult areas and difficult growing conditions through heat waves or disease spread, that tends to be more common during winter freeze-thaw cycles. So planning needs to be done in advance in consideration of these climate changes. Also looking at, referenced again in that info sheet we handed out, strategies for either low-impact development or utilizing green infrastructure options that are suitable for Beaumont's climate. Open space and natural areas represent a significant planning space and opportunity for greater species diversity and an opportunity for planting in parks and open spaces, which is a much easier win compared to trying to increase tree canopy coverage along boulevards. So in essence, there will always be an opportunity to share useful information with the community about tree health and care. There are many ways residents can help or hurt trees. Not all of them are obvious, and not all of them are well-known. So in addition to the technical aspects of this kind of work, there's also an important public information and communication piece that goes along with it. As communication and understanding supports a healthier city. So with that, Lenore, I'll pass it back to you. Thanks.
So we just wanted to share some information on the current tree assets and the current management plan in Beaumont. So this is new council information. So in terms of where urban forest assets are located and their benefits, we have many city-managed trees on public streets where they improve attractiveness, manage water runoff, provide shade. We have many city-managed trees within parks that provide wildlife habitat, provide wildlife corridors. In the warmer months, they provide recreation opportunities, and in the winter as well. And they provide an opportunity for diversity of tree species. Also, there's many city-managed trees on business parks where they can act as noise buffers from street traffic. They improve aesthetics, they provide natural barriers between buildings and businesses, and they create shade which decreases temperatures on paved areas. So within Beaumont, we currently have a tree inventory of 9,300 trees on public property. And so out of Beaumont, total just over 1,000 hectares, that represents approximately 55 hectares covered in tree canopy. So that's just over 5%. So that is fairly low compared to many municipalities, and that's partly because we are somewhat of a new, fast-growing municipality. So as you can see in this image here, which is from our internal GIS portal, the dark green in the center of the city here represents a high quantity of trees. And then as you move out, some of these parks do not have as many dark areas, so that's simply open park space. So there's many opportunities for planting additional trees in various areas of the city. So Beaumont currently has 143 hectares of open park space. So that's a fair bit of park space. And then of that park space, we have 6.44% of cover, which is canopy cover. So again, that's somewhat low compared to some municipalities. So there's an opportunity for more planting, and again, that's because we're fairly new with new developments. So that provides lots of opportunity for additional planting. And then in terms of our internal tree inventory, the way a tree gets put onto the inventory, which was begun in 2020, is after a developer plants the tree, takes care of it for the required period of time, then an inspector goes out and can give it a final acceptance certificate if it is doing well. And then once it receives that, it goes onto the inventory. So once it's on the inventory, that's our responsibility to manage and maintain it. So these trees are all mapped on the internal GIS portal, and we have a spreadsheet of information on these trees. So here's a screenshot of the portal. All these green dots here represent a tree that we have information on within the city, and that is a city-owned tree. And one of the ideas for the future is to make this publicly available as well, the portal of all the tree locations. I think that would be interesting for residents. In terms of current resources and tasks, internally, there are currently two city park staff. That is Drew and Darren, who do the majority of the tree-related work. So a portion of their time goes to tree-related work. They also have other jobs that they do, such as snow removal and winter drainage and stuff like that. We also have one to two summer students in the summer that are involved in tree-related work in terms of watering fertilizer. Fertilizing, most city resource hours goes into tree pruning, tree removal, watering fertilizer, and contract management. And then in terms of contractors, approximately 80,000 to 200,000 a year is spent on contractors for tree-related work. And that includes hiring them for planting, pruning, and removals. So we have the service Beaumont portal, which is within the Beaumont website. So that is where residents can put in a service request if they want something done that's tree-related. So currently, tree management is based mainly on service requests submitted through the portal, and then the city staff prioritize these requests. And then they are either addressed in-house or contracted out, depending on the equipment and resource needs. So a lot of the requests include addressing hazard trees by pruning, such as trees being in conflict with buildings, sidewalks, fallen branches, addressing dead or drying trees that require removal and replacement, often outside resident homes, and addressing damaged trees. So those are the majority of the current service requests that come through. So that leads us to gaps in current tree management approach. So currently, there's no urban forest management strategy, so there's no future planning in the far range currently. So it tends to be reactive rather than proactive, largely based on service requests. So that is why we do want to develop this urban forest management strategy. Also, additional budgets required for tree replacement. Currently, there's a backlog of trees to be replaced and planted. We also require a plan for tree planting in parks, as there is low canopy cover currently. Additional staff hours for tree management tasks. There's currently no formal pruning schedule. There's currently no public education for tree species or care on private or public property, and no formal municipal approach for pest or disease control on private property, and no policy for pest or disease control on public property. So we hope to address some of these items in the urban forest management strategy. So next steps, I'll pass it to Nola.
Great, thanks again, Lenore. Alright, so just briefly, at the end of March, we'll be working through goals and targets with staff and setting those specific numbers for those sparser-looking areas of the city. And based on that information, we're planning to launch a public online survey. We're targeting Earth Day, which is on April 22nd. The theme is actually investing, investing in your city, so we'll be doing that with this project. There is also an opportunity to promote the survey in early May. I think, Lenore, it's May 7th, right, at the city's pancake breakfast? So that'll be some nice opportunity to drive some additional folks to the survey. And we're also looking to hold a planting event at the end of May, when it's appropriate to start planting. And then following that, our focus this summer will be on the strategy development and creation. So looking beyond summer of 2022, you can go to the next slide. We'll be seeking strategy approval, followed by budgeting and creation of the asset management plan. And that's where we'll be going. So thank you all very much for your time today. And I think our team at WSP would like to say how much we enjoy working with the Beaumont staff. They've been wonderful to work with on this, and still kind of in early days here. But the project team is here to answer any questions you may have. And Lenore and I can direct any questions to the appropriate person on our team. So, thanks very much.
Great, thank you, Lenore and Nola. Really appreciate the overview there. Clearly, a lot of opportunities, but those gaps were certainly glaring there. So as you see from the hands going up, a lot of interest in this from council. And I think I had Counselor Miller first, followed by Counselor Tessier, and then Counselor Venu first. So over to you, Ash.
Thank you, Chair. I really liked that presentation, learning more about the trees. I was interested to hear that it's kind of more reactive rather than proactive at this time. So I guess what I'm really interested in is what, when you talk about the planting activity in May, to go along with, I think there was like a pancake breakfast planting activity. You just had it there on a few slides ago. What does that exactly mean? Because I would love to see the community get more involved and more educated on planting trees. And I would love to see them, you know, kids and schools be able to go and plant trees in our community. I think it's really important. So I don't know how that plays into the more proactive approach, and if you could just expand on what that vision looks like.
Certainly. Lenore, are you okay if I start out briefly? Okay, so I think, you know, what came actually out of the staff workshops is oftentimes with planting events, they can sometimes create a bit more harm than good. So we've got to structure this planting event so that the city gets a good return on investment for purchasing all those trees. Larger saplings will perform better. We also need to ensure that the area, there isn't significant soil compaction. So part of this program, we'll be working with Darren and Drew on doing it. So the money is spent very efficiently and effectively. The intent will be to have public in attendance with information available and some level of participation. But some folks who have been experienced with planting events in the past have found you do need a good amount of, you know, machinery involved, and you need the area cordoned off. So the intent is to, you know, create some excitement and some information about the strategy, about trees in general. Create areas where people can have some hands-on involvement, but there will be some heavy lifting involved where the general public can't go for safety reasons or because of the soil conditions. So Lenore, if you've got anything else, or if Drew or Darren want to add into that, please go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have too much to add, except that it's still in the beginning phases of sorting out exactly how it will go. I think the pancake breakfast is a community spring kickoff event on May 7th. So there we'll just provide some information about the survey that will be out and provide some information at that point about the upcoming planting and public engagement. So we think the public engagement and planting would be near the end of May, possibly after that even. So yeah, but that's still in the beginning stages of sorting out. And as Nola said, yeah, we want to have public engagement and kids as well involved and community involvement, but also make sure that planting is done in a way that's useful for the future. So we'll have to get a lot of expertise from Drew and Darren, the park staff, on how to make sure those trees are well-planted during the event.
Perfect, thank you so much. That's really good to hear. And even if it doesn't go as far as, actually, because you said there's a lot of machinery and everything involved, if it doesn't get as far as maybe necessarily planting a bunch of trees because of that, you know, aspect of it being so heavily driven by machinery and stuff, even just educating, you know, especially youth and getting into schools. I'm not sure what that looks like or how to do that at this point, but educating them on what tree health looks like and how to take care of those, so they can recognize that on their own. You know, walking down the boulevards and everything. So that's just kind of a comment, but I think this is a great, great presentation. Thank you.
And just one additional comment is, we have developed a communications and engagement strategy for this project. And part of it is, you know, developing those relationships with schools and looking at, you know, potential for micropropagation in some of the school sites and working with community groups to kind of establish more of a grassroots approach to that. to kind of establish more of a grassroots approach to um to that kind of information sharing and knowledge sharing. So that'll definitely be in the works and um any counselors who are interested in playing a larger role in some of those events, we'd be, we'd be happy to chat with you more about it.
Great, thanks for that, uh we'll go to Councilor Tessia.
Thanks Chair, and thank you so much for the presentation. Um, this is great, I was super excited to see this. And um even over the last few years, I've noticed a big difference in uh our trees in Beaumont since our burst got on board. And they're they're looking a lot healthier and some were removed. So it's noticed just from a resident even before coming on to council. Just a a question, so when a developer goes into an area and and there's not a ton of ton of these areas in Beaumont. When there's a certain amount of trees. How do we ensure that they just work that into their plan, whether they leave them on the lots or kind of, you know how our draughtson left the trees in the lots? Um, is that something that's being looked at? Or why do they always just bulldoze the trees down and just start from scratch?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think one of the things on the um action items to do going forward is to have tree protection measures. So if if new houses are being built, we can try to protect older trees where it makes sense. Um, and have policies and plans in place to protect those older trees. Um, and then in terms of developers going in and uh planting trees, they do have required number of trees to plant based on the area. Um, so right now it's it's listed in the general design standards. Some of those guidelines, but I think part of the strategy will be to look at those general design standards and see if we need to tweak them at all. Um, if there hasn't been the desired result. And then, once they have, but there is options for them to plant less. And then in lieu of that, they are able to plant in another location. Um, so that occurs as well. I don't know if anybody else wants to speak further to that.
Uh, actually, I I think uh Counselor Tessie, are you alluding to forested areas being taken out? Uh, for houses or are you talking about a planted tree stock that's already in place?
Existing, yeah, either existing forests or even small, like if you look at the map of where our our limits are. There are certain sections in the city that there are like a significant amount of trees there. Where houses haven't been built there, but to me that that obviously is gonna be a benefit. So I'm just always surprised when they take them away or remove them when you think that would increase the value.
The the one, the one problem they have with existing forests in the area is their Aspen stands. So they're one giant root system. So if they start doing any grade changes or any sort of development around the root systems. What ends up happening is you get dive back into the forested area more than what you've just graded to. Um, and then you end up having a hazard tree problem with later on. It's usually shows takes about two to three years to show the true signs of what impact's been done. But then those trees start falling into properties or into infrastructure. So if you're alluding to uh forested areas, that's kind of the reason why they they have to take them out is because of that that practice.
That makes sense, I I didn't know that, so I appreciate uh the good explanation, so thank you. Um, but yeah, again, I'm really excited to see this. I I love trees personally, so it's great, we're getting a plan together and making sure we're uh we're looking to the future for that, so thanks again.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and I just did did want to add that during the planning phases, um I see Kendra's on the call, I don't know if she wanted to add anything. But during planted planning stages of uh, you know, an area structure plan. It is encouraged to often keep some natural features. But um but it does depend, as Darren said, how it works out logistically and in terms of how the developer plans their strategy. But it it is often um recommended to keep many natural features um as as developments are designed. But it doesn't necessarily all always work out. Yeah.
Sure, I appreciate that, thank you.
Councilor Van Newkirk, we'll go to you next mate.
Sounds good, thank you, I was glad that uh Ashley and Renee beat me to the punch here and uh hit on a few of the things that I wanted to hit on. Um, I got a, I got a few here Chair, so uh bear with me, I'll try to keep it as brief as I can. Uh, first of all, for me, this is a an area that I've seen a lot of growth and development in. Uh, further to uh Counselor Tessie's comments around, you know, being able to see the effects of the continuous improvement over the last few years, especially since the our burst is on board taking care of stuff and uh working out there with summer students and whatnot. It's it's very visible and people see that. And one of the, one of the benefits of that is um that that we're moving ahead and we're cleaning up and we're pruning and and things are starting to look good. One of the challenges is is that people want more of it. And uh, you know, there's a cost associated with that, so um just running some uh informal unfair numbers out of this report, ninety three hundred times two thousand, the tree. In its crudest, most simple form is eighteen point six million dollars. Uh, and that is just um, you know, tree replaced with sapling costs. So there is a significant asset in our urban forest um in uh you you know, that's not even a fair monetary value, but um, you know, that that's what you can put together just in with quick math from this report. So the two things that I hear the most about. And I'll maybe pause for some comment after after these two pieces here is uh, you know, shade for children and parents in the playgrounds and parks. So you know, the kids are playing and the parents are sitting on the one uh, you know, the one bench in there. So we'll get to benches at at a different meeting, but there's one bench and there's no trees and the kids are running around and it's hot. Um, so you know, there's definitely been a lot of feedback on that. And then the policy gap as identified around um the pruning to eliminate damage on trees. So publicly, we're improving, you know, we don't, you know, the there's a policy gap there. We're improving by pruning some of the the disease um off of trees. But I the thing I hear about is the the gap in education for residents. So just on my my area alone, um in Colonial Down Riker. When I go for a bike ride, I see that our public trees are starting to get cleaned up pretty well. But you don't have to look very far to, and I can't remember the name of it, but it's the black growth that happens around the around the branches. That, you know, is is prevalent in a certain tree species and whatnot. And I think we're, well, I know that we're missing an educational opportunity on that for residents to to chop that out. Um, so just maybe I'll pause for a couple of comments on on that and then I'll continue with a couple of our bullet points.
I I, do you want me to take this one, Lenore?
Sure.
Okay, uh, so what you're alluding to is the black knot. Um, and it is quite prevalent in both our natural stands as well as uh it's it's prone to hit the the cherry species. So maydays and shoebird choke cherries are the biggest victims around here. Um, so it is naturally occurring in some of our natural stands as well. Uh, and it spreads pretty prevalently um by wind, by insects and by birds. So that's why it's so prevalent in town. But with the constant uh fluctuations in climatic conditions, we're we're seeing diseases uh show up. Uh, depending on how wet a year is or how dry a year is, we we're seeing different diseases keep popping up on the radar. And there is a handful of ones that we're watching that could take out a a large portion of an urban forest. It should have get into an area uh, that being a Dutch elm disease as well as um Emerald Ashbor. If either two of those diseases reaches Beaumont, we're in big trouble as well as the city of Edmonton and and other municipalities around here. So uh, there is constant monitoring going on and dialogue within the industry uh as to what what people are seeing. So uh, there is definitely an opportunity for education um to help us thwart some of that disease and keep it at bay.
Yeah, that's awesome. Um, so you just hit on the how do we ensure or my my diversity comment. So diversity in species is going to be very important moving forward. So you know, that we're not creating big monocultures here that are, you know, as as at risk to uh to those types of issues. So um, so the next piece here is just on densification. And uh, you know, some of the densification efforts that, you know, we are are put on to us for regional reasons. So the closer we put things together and the smaller yards are and the smaller boulevards are and all of that. Uh, decreases the ability to put more plant species and and urban canopy. Uh, there the possibility for urban caper canopy coverage is reduced because we're skinnier lots and we're, you know, we just, we just don't have the room for those trees. Um, how can we take this urban canopy stra- uh strategy and start uh putting it across some of the planning that we're doing? Because the the planning so far, I don't know that it considers uh the, you know, the value and necessity of the urban canopy.
I think one thing that's going on right now is a bunch of nurseries are identifying the fact that lots are getting smaller and houses are getting tighter. So you're seeing a lot of uh columnar varieties enter into various species, not just poplars anymore, but various other species. Which is an opportunity, but they still have to be able to handle our cold hardy in his zone. Uh, we're currently sitting at a zone three, but I think we're creeping towards a zone four. Um, so we are seeing zone four um species starting to move into our area. And uh continuing to grow here and and do be successful. So it's kind of a wait and see, uh we can you definitely tap into that columnar sort of variety uh to to help us in those those tight areas. But again, you you don't want to overdo it on those because then you end up with another problem should a disease uh impact those related species.
Yeah, thank you, and two more bullet points, Mr. Chair, thanks for everyone's patience here. Uh, the first one you kind of alluded to uh already around uh sourcing requirements. But one of the presentations we had uh last term uh was focused on sourcing requirements and uh, you know, evaluating where species come from. And you know, there's not really any legislated or policy controls on that. Uh, you know, some farms may put a lot of effort, farms, nurseries may pay a lot, put a lot of effort to, you know, cleaning their species. Um, you know, and uh making sure that they're disease free and all of those good practices, whereas other places may not and and you just don't know. So currently there isn't any um requirement, I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, about where you source. And um, you know, what kind of practices are used there? So you know, we are at risk um every time a a species is brought into Beaumont at importing disease. There's some comment around that?
Yes, actually, our our general design standards have uh our stock coming from a a clean hea- uh, a clean health nursery. Uh, they they're actually a designated uh status of being a clean plant nursery. Um, so there's, I think there's four or five around the Edmonton area that most, most of our contractors source their their stock from. Uh, one is actually Cheyenne just outside of town, so um it helps promote their business as well. Um, they're ne- they're nice and they're local, but uh we do require them to to come from those respective nurseries.
Oh, that's awesome, I'm very happy to hear that. Um, last piece here is is
Sorry, I was just, I was just gonna add to that, uh, sorry, through the charity committee member Van Newkirk. Um, thanks for the question, a couple of the other items that you might be alluding to as well when it comes to pests or certain species being brought in is we can't really control the Canadian tires or the Costcos or some of those businesses that sell trees. And when they bring them in, a a resident buys it and and puts it in their backyard. And so that's part of public engagement. A lens as part of this approach is to help inform residents when they do either spot a pest on their tree. Um, like black knot, for example, that we want to be able to A, have some education towards those sorts of pests. And B, one of the things that came out of some of what we've heard with our stakeholder engagements is that there isn't really a mechanism in place right now to kind of put someone on notice if their whole backyard is full of black knot. We can do that if we had weeds in a in a yard, if there's if there's noxious weeds, that's that's a mechanism. But right now there isn't a mechanism to identify some of uh, or at least acknowledge that there's some concerns with someone with a private residence. At least put them on notice to have it resolved, because that's another thing we heard as part of the engagement is Terran's group is doing their best to keep it to stay ahead of this on their side. But if they've got a private resident right next door that has black knot or has a a pest that continues to infect the the city inventory. You're kind of, it's a losing battle in that regard. Um, and the last thing I was gonna mention too, I wanted to jump in a little bit before with regards to the canopies over top of the the benches around the playgrounds, that was what was another item that came up with with Darren's group is ninety percent of the trees they've replaced over the last three years have been on boulevards, because that's where the importance has been. When a resident loses a tree in front of the host, they want that tree replaced. Having said that, what you're hearing, uh, a committee member Van Newkirk is there is an opportunity for us to start planting some trees in some of the park sites. Because again, the public education piece demonstrates that, yeah, we don't want to have a bench sitting in the middle of a of an open field. It's nice to have that shade, so there's, there's going to be an opportunity to, you know, easy wins in the sense of planting some trees in some of these larger open areas. So, sorry, I had a few things I wanted to cover there.
Yeah, no, and and I think that's off, the I think that's awesome. And I actually hadn't thought about the, you know, where do residents go and drag the trees into Beaumont from, right? Like, that's a very important part and 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 like then the policy gap, once again, that you just identified around. Hey, we can call in uh a thistle issue, but we can't call in a black knot issue because we don't have the tools uh in in in-house to deal with that. So that's awesome. I'm gonna end with a quote uh from a local resident uh that you shouldn't put a five hundred dollar tree in a fifty dollar hole. And uh, you know, and I think those who are involved in the industry know all about that. And and that's just speaks also to what Nola was talking about about the, you know, the public engagement planting event, right? Like, we 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 need to do this very thoughtfully and we can't just grab some shovels and go truck some chuck some trees in the ground, right? Like, needs to be done thoughtfully and well and be treated as an education tool uh alongside partners. And then we can get some of those best practices uh through the families into their backyards and, you know, here's the right way to do it and then off we go. So thank you for everyone's patience, I had a lot to say on that one, it's one of my faves, so appreciate it.
You bet, Steve, I I allowed uh about an hour in the agenda for you there, so um you you did very well. I appreciate your expertise and and experience and all that sort of stuff, so thank you. Uh, Councilor McCook, we'll go to you before uh the mayor.
Thank you, Chair. Um, same as as uh what all the other counselors have said, I I love this idea and I'm happy to see that we are um putting something together. Um, Councilor Van Newkirk kind of alluded to this a little bit and I guess you guys answered it um a little bit. But um, some of your key challenges, you had mentioned zero lot line uh development. So I know I've been told that there's some really nice um neighborhoods that have great landscaping that are zero lot line. Um, if we see more of these types of neighborhoods, um how will this impact uh the urban forest management? And kind of what are we gonna do to deal with that, I guess?
Uh, Jordan, do you wanna?
Sure, I can jump there.
I can just see you itching to answer.
Uh, through the chaired committee member, uh McCook, McCook, um thank you for the question. I think some of the things we've also heard with the with the stakeholder engagements is is the constraints we have with A zero lot lines, boulevard widths. You know, uh, a huge network of shallow utilities, infrastructure in place, sidewalks, we've got driveways that end up getting widened when the host gets built, so now we've even lost more space. And so it it does, it is a difficult um challenge to try to overcome. Some of the different ideas that we were bouncing around, maybe something along the lines of, as a developer, you still need to provide those trees. So cash and loo is isn't the best option, because that's not, you know, the the resident doesn't see that tree in their yard or in front of their house. There might be some opportunities to perhaps have engaged in some conversation with industry through the UDI uh per se to to see if we would get some participation from the developers to perhaps um provide trees to the residents when they do buy their houses. Because there is green space in front of their house. Um, that is one challenge that can't happen too, is you can plant a tree in a boulevard, resident plants a tree in their front yard because they want a tree in their front yard. And ten years later, you've got them competing for the same canopy space. So in some of these zero lot line uh opportunities, that might be a part of the discussion that we could engage the industry to to see if they would be entertaining uh that approach. Uh, outside of that is working with uh with the different engineering services to perhaps try to shift. Again, working on some road cross sections to see if there's an opportunity to pull some of the utilities under the sidewalks rather than in the landscape boulevard. Or work with, work with um road crossings and street locations to be a bit more thoughtful with where they're placed to to allow for some some space. But it's kind of, everyone has to be on board, including the, including the developer. Um, and and obviously the different approving authorities to recognize the importance of that green space. Although be small, nonetheless, it's still it's still pretty vital, so Kendra.
Yes, thank you. Uh, thank you to that, uh, Jordan, you definitely touched on a lot of the different concerns that relate to zero lot line. So we are going to be taking a closer look at the site planning stage about where we call them conflicts. But street furnishings and landscaping and everything else kind of leads to all these different issues as we're getting to have more dense neighborhoods. And how they relate to driveways and all sorts of things. But one of the other things that we did with the land use bylaw was we also looked at trees on private property. And also, we were looking at, you know, you could have that one tree also be in your rear yard. There's no reason that I think the tree canopy doesn't always have to be in the front of your yard. Uh, we can also talk about that on the back of our yards as well. And I think that that's a place people are overlooking, so there's opportunities there to do more education, I think, for people on what types of trees are import like are good in a dense urban environment and where is appropriate to be planting these.
Yeah, for sure. I think um kind of what you guys both alluded to, it's, it sounds like there's gonna have to Yeah, for sure. I think um kind of what you guys both alluded to is it sounds like there's gonna have to be a lot of cross-agency and cross-department. Um. Collaboration there, I guess, to make sure that a lot of this stuff is in place and then the public education piece. Um, when it comes to, so hopefully, as you guys work through this, um, we are kind of looking ahead to. To collaborate with those agencies and those those things that um. That Jordan spoke spoke about, especially with the utilities and and whatnot, because I I can imagine it's gonna be a little bit complicated. Um, as we see more of these neighborhoods. Um, one more question, um, does this strategy take into account? Um, or include any type of um like edible landscape type of initiatives? I know that Grand Prairie does something similar to that, um, like they have their orchards program and stuff and it's quite successful. Is that? Part of this or would that be something completely different?
So we actually have in development right now an urban agriculture plan as well. Um, so I'm I'm not a huge part of that, uh, and I think that's in the beginning stages, but there will be discussions between. What's going on with this strategy and that one to make sure they fit together because urban agriculture fits in well with um edible fruits from trees and. Um, that type of thing. So we'll try to make sure they they fit together while moving forward.
And the one thing I would add to that as well is um, it has to be the approach, has to be a thoughtful approach and and. Green spaces or some of the open areas is would be sort of the first thought you'd want to have it. Um, there have been some case or some some uh previous neighborhoods and even one here in Edmonton that had done. Edible fruit within roads and boulevards and, you know, it ends up becoming quite a bit of a mess. And then you end up getting the reverse of it. You get a lot of complaints. And so. When we're implementing this as part of the process, along with the egg plan would be to. Try to be selective in those areas. And again, it could be another public education element. Maybe it's part of something, some part of uh schooling engagement as well. And perhaps have something within the parcel on the school with regards to the edible edible material. But yeah, it's definitely. In in the in part of the part of the mindset, so.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Right, let's go to uh the mayor here for uh the the final comment on on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you presentation, uh, very informative. I remember my our very first budget, Sam and Steve, remember, five years ago. We had a very large number for a tree plenty program of a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And at that time, there was many years of uh. Lack of tree replacement in Beaumont and we were trying to play catch up. I know as early looks to earlier, we have done a very good job last couple of years of getting our. Urban canopy up uh looking more attractive, looking uh world better maintained, it's a great thing. So I'm really pleased about that. I am dismayed that we have such a large gap in our strategy. Uh, there's probably more holes than anything else in there that I wasn't aware of. So I'm looking forward to. Having all those gaps addressed in a in a strategy going forward. I will have one brief comment, Mr. Chair, for our committee to consider. I'm wondering if you could consider as part of the public engagement coming up later earlier later this year. Could we consider maybe asking the public to test the waters for a tree legacy program? Such as, for example, we have a legacy program where you can, you know, buy a bench in memory of someone who's passed away. Uh, and put a bench somewhere in Beaumont at a park or or somewhere like that or along a along a walking path that that person loved to walk on, for example. Perhaps maybe we could test the waters with the public and see if there's any interest in a legacy program for trees where a family could spend, you know. X, Y, or Z dollars and have a a certain size tree plant and have a little little plaque beside the tree donated by, for example, I'm looking at Catherine. On the screen, the McCook family donated this tree, you know. Uh, they're already talking to the public about trees. Maybe we could incorporate that into the uh. Into the public engagement possibly. If it's possible, I'd like to see that happen. If it's doable, if it's not, I appreciate that, but. I think there's more interest in trees than people think there are. Many people like to have a nice urban canopy. They don't realize how much it takes to maintain it, but they. They do like it. And I think maybe some public engagement with the legacy program may spark some interest in the overall project. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and to presenters. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I think that's a really good point that hopefully we can look into.
And uh, just just to that point there, there there is some uh, there has been some trees planted uh for loved ones that have passed away. Uh, within the city of Beaumont. I think it's currently dealt with through our uh, I think it goes through our recreational department. And then they spearhead that and and uh we aid them in the planting and and. Uh, attaining the material and contractors to perform that work.
Okay, um, we'll uh we'll wrap that up there. I will just a add um to that. I I know folks uh who. You know, as we're going through the design for the off-leash park uh out in the west acres of Beaumont, we're we're very interested in in opportunities to to provide. Um, trees in into that area as well. So speaking to to Bill's legacy, legacy program there, so. Um, as you're as you're considering that, um, just just consider that audience as well. It's a a perfect opportunity to to increase the. Uh, the tree footage there. Um, just a couple of quick comments to close for me. Uh, I'm really excited about the public engagement uh component to all this. Um, prior to any of this, you know, my public engagement came from my mother-in-law who came over and pointed all the black knot that was in my trees and told me to get rid of it. And and this is how I did it. So. Uh, definitely the 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 public education piece is gonna be, is gonna be crucial step of this. And then the last comment I'll make uh is just around the budgeting and 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 Bill touched on, you know, the challenge that we had at budget time. Uh, so a couple of things. One, I I encourage council to remember this discussion and and remember the passion around this. Um, often when it comes down to dollars and cents and. You know, unfortunately, trees get put up against a hockey rink or this this type of thing and and we we just don't want to be in that space. So. I'd encourage this group, um, you know, Lenore and and team to to come back, you know, prior prior, I know it's part of your schedule, but come back to us. And and make sure that we're we're really talking about the value of it and not just a dollar per tree and for us to kind of think that that tangibly. So. Uh, really really encourage you guys to come back and and speak to the value of this. So, um, I'll uh, I see Jordan's got one final comment. You got too much passion for me to cut you off.
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, yeah, honestly, that that's the next step uh was part of the urban forest management strategy is the asset management. Um, plan as part of this. So that's when the the city can recognize, okay, those ninety three hundred trees have a have a a value of. Four thousand dollars each, five thousand dollars each, so that the um people that are living adjacent to these trees understand the importance of them. And the other side of it is even from a insurance or liability standpoint, no, heaven forbid, we get a a really bad pest infestation or a terrible hillstorm. Hailstorm. What sort of measures are in place to replace those trees that end up getting damaged or die because of those sorts of events? Although it's only ninety three hundred, ninety three hundred trees as uh, as a committee member of Van Newkirk mentioned, you know, that's eighteen million dollars if you just put a two thousand dollar value on the tree. And it would cost much more than that to get that exact tree back to it to his existing um state. So. Very important to understand the asset side and the value side of it too, because that is. A very expensive asset. So, thank you for the time.
Yeah, great, great discussion. Um, and uh, um, yeah, I I think you could hear from from the counselors here. Um, and the mayor that the passion that that we have here and and hopefully we can keep that going as we move into ultimately what you're gonna need is some some dollars and cents to be able to pull this off. So. Um, thank you for that. Uh, so with that, I'll I'll ask the clerk to pull up uh the the motion to receive that reporter's information. And I'll see if there is a a counselor willing to uh move that. Yeah, Council Miller will go with you, please.
Sure, I move that February fifteenth, twenty twenty two report, urban forest for forest strategy be received for information.
Thank you, Council Miller. Uh, I'll uh call a question from uh folks here. Just waiting on you, Council McCook. Thumbs up, got you there. Okay, that that carries unanimously. I appreciate that. And and Lenore and team, thank you uh again very much for coming in. A lot of information, not only just in here, but in the background package as well. So looking forward to that, continuing that that conversation.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right, thanks, everyone.
All right, guys, that brings us uh to item four D here, uh, department update, recreation. I see Mr. Suter's uh. Uh, here with us and he's uh got it getting a slideshow ready to go. So, um, Mr. Suter, we'll uh we'll pass it over to you to to kick off this department update.
Apologies, Chair. I was having trouble finding the right button there, so. Evening to the chair and to the committee. Um, first off, I'm gonna apologize in advance because right above my head, the beauty of my office being in the BSRC. Is the fitness center. And there's a couple of uh our guests that are uh heavy lifting weights tonight and it's dropping right on my head. So if you hear a bunch of banging around. I'm not in a war zone or a construction zone, that's just the the joys of the job. So we've got a PowerPoint to run through briefly here this evening. And then I've got some of my team with us online for any specific questions that might pertain more to their area. So. We'll introduce them after we go through the PowerPoint, if that's okay.
Hey, Paul, just to to briefly cut you off there. Sorry, you you're sharing your screen, um, but but not the uh, not the full slideshow. Um, you know what I mean? So if you could just make so that we can uh, we can read that.
There we go. Is that better?
Nope, that's worse.
All right, I don't know why it's doing that.
Paul, I'll just jump in with some tech support for you. If you stop share.
Okay.
So stop showing your screen and now uh launch your PowerPoint presentation, like start slideshow. And then once it's in that view where it's a slideshow, then share your screen from there and it should work for you.
Okay, sorry. Start shot a slideshow, okay?
There we are. Good man.
There we go. Thank you. Sorry for, thanks for bearing with me. I've got three screens and I can't figure out one of them. That's typical. So the purpose is to provide to me the whole with an overview of the rec department. And highlight the apartment's core programs, services, recent and upcoming initiatives. So what you see on the screen is the organization chart. And at first glance, it looks like a lot of people, but. You have to keep in mind that between the three buildings, we pretty much operate seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-two days. Sixty hundred, three hundred sixty-three days, you know, everywhere from five thirty AM till eleven thirty at night. So. What looks like a lot of, a lot of folks is really very thin when you spread them out over over that uh, over the buildings and over. Those hours of service for the public. And when you look at the org chart, it's basically kind of broken into three areas. One is the recreation services area. One is more focused around uh culture, arts and events. And then the other piece is the operational group which supports the recreation services and programs. Uh, we've got two managers, each are split into the rec side and the rec facility side, as well as a team lead. Who looks after the arts and events team. All three of those individuals are on the call tonight, so I'll introduce them when we're finished here. That org chart comprises of the equivalency of fifty-five point two full-time employees. There's also summer and casual positions that come on in the seat for a season. So the buildings that we operate are, of course, the BSRC. And I'm gonna, there's a note there, twenty thousand spontaneous usage visits a month. So what that. Is talking about is. Paying guests, not including spectators that come through. So in one month, we're seeing twenty thousand people come in and pay. To use our programs and services. So it's really been picking up. I anticipate that number to be growing as we speak. I know from walking around, it's getting busier. Um, and after hours and on the weekends, it is incredibly busy when you've got lacrosse and soccer and hockey going on. So. It is uh picking up, uh, I guess, as we hopefully come out of uh the pandemic for good here. Uh, Ken Nickel, Rec Center, the high prime time usage year round as well. Anyone that goes into that building on the weekends will. Attest to that, it is, it is a very jam-packed facility. The community center, medium-sized event for weddings, is well utilized for our by CVOs for a variety of activities and events, programs. As well as the second floor is, we have a lease space there for the uh Society for Dance. They use that pretty much full-time. And the fourth area is arts and events. And we've got our team lead here tonight, um, Joanna. And arts and events, basically, it's a new position that we created. Um, the events were there previous, but the art, the team lead position came on board last year. And a part of the focus area is to enhance the events as well as reach and support our CVOs. And try and strengthen um our game with arts and culture. Our Places in Play is our Bible, if you will, that we we work off. Um, is something that. Has certainly not been put on the shelf since it was introduced in January of twenty twenty and adopted by city council. It is something that one of our committees, the Rec Culture and Parks Advisory Committee, has as a standing agenda item every time that committee meets. Um, and everything that is on the agenda is referred to and tried to be associated with a section in the master plan. So that is our way of keeping that master plan living. We review it annually. As far as whether it's an operational recommendation or a capital recommendation and try and update that as we move forward. So. We're trying to adhere to the plan. Obviously, there are budgetary factors that do come into play with that. But we certainly uh do not leave it on the shelf as the saying goes. We, it is an active document that we. We look at regularly. Short-term priorities are one to five years that are in there. And you see there acquire managed sustainable land, invest in additional human resources, enhance existing facilities. Plan and build new high priority facilities. That's an ongoing initiative. It says short-term priorities. So we we've already accomplished quite a bit of that already. In the first two years of this plan. And I anticipate we continue to do that um with council support. Medium and long-term priorities are obviously more significant from a capital dollar perspective. Uh, the plan talks about the plan to and building an art center, for example, building another indoor ice surface, more diamonds. Um, yeah, some of that work is underway. Um, as far as planning and building an art center, we council supported the the striking of a. Performing Arts Facility Steering Committee, which will be reporting back to council here shortly. As far as an update on the work that they've been doing, they've been very active. Um, there's been a lot of things coming to play with that, which I won't touch on tonight specifically, but. And suffice to say, council will get an update on that short in short order. Um, one thing I'd like to uh highlight here is assuming the role of partner on the service level continued. The the master plan talks about the city slowly transitioning, if you will, away from just owning and operating and trying to control everything. And looking to potentially partner, whether it's partnering with other agencies, partnering with CVOs. Whoever the right partner is for the program, the service, or even perhaps the facility. So it it is trying to grow that um bench strength, if you will. So it's not just always relied on to the city to be the leader in everything. What it also does is empowers our our community groups, our sports groups to get actively involved. Then we've seen some of that to date. Uh, with some of our uh um rec and sport groups, they've come to the plate. No pun intended. And they're looking to, you know, provide capital dollars and and whatnot towards some of the facilities that we've we've already started to build or have completed to build. So. Um, I think we're already moving that way. It's just more of an educational piece to continue to bring it up and see if we can seize opportunities as they present themselves. Uh, the master plan also talks about adopting and implementing a new parks classification system. Ensuring parkland does not result from leftover space or remaining parcels. That's something that. Planning, I know, is very much aware of and with every new either neighborhood, school set, whatever the issue is. Um, or the area is, sorry, um, you know, ensuring that the city's wreck and park needs are not. Um, are are forefront in 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 how that land is developed. As well as securing lands to create a cohesive trail and park network. And I know uh cohesive trails, connectivity, that's something that's been on the radar. The last number of years. And we did a bunch of that in twenty twenty-one. And I know uh. Planning is looking at the next piece, the next phase of connectivity for either new trails or. Uh, you know, connecting existing trails, connecting them so that we can get more use of the trail system. And another one that the master plan talks about is securing lands for a town square and um within the existing Santraville area. Something definitely on the radar and even uh the uh. I'll tip that a little bit, the Performing Arts Facility Steering Committee has had that conversation about a town square and what that could look like. And how could, if that could be part of what they're looking at. So it is not a forgotten item. Um, is something that we'll be looking at for potentially some public engagement down the road here to see what the community thinks about a town square and. And how that really could come to fruition. It may be part of something larger. And Master Plan also finally talks about securing lands for Recreation School co- uh co-located site. Um, the future of a new phased-in multipurpose leisure center. These are obviously longer-term priorities because they're significant capital dollars, but it's definitely in there and. Master Plan is a fantastic document. It was well done, well, the committee was well engaged in it. There's a lot of good data in there. And those of you that have had a chance to look at it. Some of you looked at it a lot, you you'll know that. Upcoming projects and initiatives for twenty twenty-two, quarter one, there's a list of things there. And one I'll highlight there is. Uh, recruitment for outdoor programmer. That's the new position that will be coming on board this year. The recruiting process that I'm told is about to launch on that as far as getting it out for advertisement. It's very busy in all four quarters of the year. These are, a lot of these are ongoing every year. Some of them obviously are one-offs, but when you look through the all the quarters and the activities, initiatives, they're an ongoing work that we do. Quarter two, West Rec Site Multi-Use Field Opens, of course, those are. Quarter two, West Rec Site Multi-Use Field Opens. Of course, those are going to be significant events when that happens. Very exciting. Those are kind of that one-off that like I mentioned. Just looking through here. I don't want to go over everything, obviously. Quarter three is a green check program pilot. That's something again that came out of the budget. Council wants to see a pilot program on that. So quarter three, that's targeted to run that pilot. And quarter four, the, uh, aforementioned performing arts steering committee is to come back with a final report. So those are the highlights for the year that I wanted to speak on. Successes, this is a big one for me. Number one, it was our ability to operate and deliver service through the pandemic, including projects that we were a part of. And, and that seems like a small statement, but it is by no means a small statement. And I know council appreciates um, the challenges that all of us have suffered as individuals, but collectively at work here and this, and how do we deliver services with the changing landscape that we've all experienced for the last two years. And I, you know, I could say our team was incredible through it, to be honest. Um, that's the only word that sums it up in, in the way we had to take, take the, uh, the cards that were dealt and, and make a good hand out of it each time. So other successes, um, continuing to build strong volunteer recruitment and relationship management. Another key piece for me would be uh, how we're moving to work better with our CVOs, our recreation groups, which has already seen the fruits of that efforts with um, whether it's minor football, looking to build a field house with us, whether it's minor baseball, looking to raise funds for the West Rec Site, whether it's minor hockey, looking to, uh, you know, provide funds for an outdoor rink. All of those are examples of, uh, relationship building and relationship management. And it's something that we have to do better at and will continue to work towards. Implementation of an allocation policy for our sporting facilities, as well as implementation of recreation software. Uh, upgraded some existing outdoor infrastructure with sports fields, trails, et cetera. We did a business plan for the BSRC, uh, for the opening of that. We've also implemented new operational policies, implemented early registration access for residents. We just recently updated the facility's joint use agreement with Black Gold. And one little note here that, uh, we put in, the department that was chosen to BSRC was chosen to host a host site for a six multi-day course through our, our associates that we're a part of, is a provincial body. And we'll be doing training, hosting training here at the BSRC. So there'll be recreation and parks folks coming from around the province to have some training here at the BSRC. So I thought that was a nice feather in our cap. And with every success, there's always going to be a little bit of a challenge or list of challenges. And some of the challenges that we wanted to just bring the committee to the committee's attention were, uh, you know, the, the ongoing balance with high usage rentals, special events, sports and spontaneous use of the BSRC. Obviously the BSRC is a fairly new facility and we're monitoring that. And any conflicts that we've seen or challenges, I won't use the word conflicts. I guess that's a bit strong, but challenges, we're, we're looking to uh, adjust on the fly and see what works in the future. Another one that I wanted to point out was there's been a lot of handshake slash verbal agreements in place. Some of this legacy operational things that we, as we look to update, we actually find out there hasn't been an, an actual written or signed agreement ever done in, in some cases. So we're playing a little catch-up for the last few decades in some cases. Um, to bring them up and to, to update it in current standards as well as actually get something written and agreed to by both parties. Some of them are very minor, but it's still, it's challenging when you've got administration turnover and people talk about agreements and then you realize it actually was never an agreement in place. So we're playing a little catch-up, but I'm, I'm trying to get that cleaned up in, in this year and next year, wrap it all up. Another challenge we've seen is we've had a lot of turnover with our front-facing staff. And when I talk about front-facing staff, that's referring mainly to guest services. Uh, the pandemic, I think, has been a big factor in that. I, I can't speak to every individual, obviously, but I just know that recruiting is a non-stop effort, whether it's, uh, the aquatic side with lifeguards or our guest services folks. And again, it goes back to my number one bullet under successes was our ability to still deliver service in, in, in spite of those additional recruiting challenges. We've also got some aging fitness equipment up in the fitness center that will be life cycling out in the, in the next few years. And we did new, uh, sorry, more work is ahead. As, as our user groups grow and we all know as Beaumont grows, they grow too. Um, it's trying to balance everybody's wants and needs through our allocation policy and their other, and any other challenges. As, and as well, they, not only do they grow, they also evolve and their, and their needs change. So we're, that's goes back to building relationships and keeping abreast of that so that we, we're not caught off guard and we're prepared for the future with, uh, in the services and the facilities that we can offer. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'm going to introduce Amanda Cuthbert is our recreation manager. She's on the line. As well as Joanna Mancher, who is our team lead arts and events. And Kyle Orleki is the manager of recreation facility. So all three are on, on the, uh, are in the meeting tonight. So I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Paul. Um, really appreciate the update and overview and, and, uh, yeah, let, let me just acknowledge, um, on behalf of, of council here. Um, just the, the amazing work over the last two years to, to manage up and down, um, with, with the restrictions and changes and policy, uh, um, all over the place. So um, really, really just wanted to acknowledge it. And I know you, you, you said that upfront, you know that we appreciate it, but just wanted to, to speak here on, on behalf of that. So um, another public was very happy to be able to get out and, and use the facilities when, when, when possible. So thank you for that. I've got some, some comments or some questions, but anyone else, uh, council, yeah, council, I'll test you. I'll go to you first, mate.
Thank you, Chair. And again, I echo what, uh, the chair says. So thank you, Paul, and, uh, for all the work your team has done. And great presentation. Uh, it was, it was really informative. So thank you. I just, uh, do want to touch a little bit on the short term and the long-term goals. Um, you know, I've mentioned an RV dump station that falls in recreation to a point. But the long-term goals with the West Rec Set, West Rec Site and the Lions RV Campground that we've grown out of years ago, because it's been there since I was a kid. Has there been any thought process around looking at some sort of newer campsite? RV dump station, all of that West Rec Site since, you know, we don't have a hotel. I really believe the city of Beaumont is recreation-heavy arts and culture. Um, it, it's such a, uh, energetic community that everyone's always doing something. Is that something that's been talked about or considered at all? Sorry, Paul, you're muted there.
Sorry, thanks. Uh, yeah, it has been discussed, um, in various forums and I know it's in the master plan. I know, uh, we did a feasibility study last year in partnership with Ladue County. And it was looking at a space that we would joint-operate and joint-share, uh, just to the south end of Spine Road area over that way. And that space would incorporate a, a lot of sports fields as well as potentially a campground. Um, obviously that's a big capital pro, program. It would, it's not something it would be, you know, imminent here. But it is, it was an option, is an option, sorry, for the future potentially. Of course, both communities have to partner on that. And I know the West Rec Site, uh, there's school sites planned in there as well, and I, I won't speak to planning's, uh, work on there. That's not my area, but, uh, we've sort of changed the use of that temporarily with the West Rec, uh, site development. Um, that was never supposed to be there. That was supposed to be other things or is supposed to be other things. So we're being creative, I guess, if you will, but there's going to be a time when we have to plan. And land, of course, is the issue with all this stuff, right? Is trying to find the right space and what space we do have. So I know we have ongoing conversations with planning around it and that feasibility study I, I mentioned earlier. I don't know if we're ever going to get that built, but that's certainly on the radar for more discussion in the future with Ladue County, for example.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting. I appreciate that. It's, it's something, uh, I heard a lot on, on the campaign trail from a lot of residents and if you've ever driven around the city, you, you see a ton of RVs. So, uh, it's, it's for sure something I'm going to be talking about over and over again. So yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, uh, Renee. Uh, and, and Paul, I wonder if, if you could just circle out that feasibility study that that was a really great report um, on that, that, uh, potential joint-use space out there and, and obviously aspirational, but there was a lot of good information on that and, and share that with the new counselors. I think that'd be, that'd be great. Uh, I think, uh, Council Ben Newkirk, you are up next.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you. And, uh, I commented in the past about the, the circular thank yous, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna join in, join in that tonight. But I'm gonna just acknowledge the, the timing, the timeliness and quality of the communications as well. Um, you know, the, thank you for keeping everything rolling, but one of the things that user groups have mentioned to me, although the messages aren't always what people want to hear, they're getting them in a timely fashion and, and very professionally delivered. So thank you for that. Um, two, two questions. Uh, first one is around scheduling and, uh, you know, there's more, there's more support coming for scheduling and the outdoor programmer position is going to be helpful for that. But one of the things I've wondered for a while is, you know, as we examine our schedules and who has booked when, have we been able to look at our scheduling gaps as, uh, programming and rental opportunities? Uh, because really that's what they are. They're, uh, you know, everybody's working from on their shift. So it's nice to have some downtime, sure, but it's actually an opportunity for programming and rentals. Just wondering if you could comment to that. Thank you.
I'm going to pass the torch over to Amanda on that one, please. Thank you.
Sure. Yes. So just so that I'm clear, this is around, uh, after we've done allocation, kind of those empty spots, what we can do to program them. Yeah.
Any, any gaps, you know, any gaps that exist for whatever reason, right? So, yeah.
Absolutely. So I think what we've done now, we, we probably have a good handle on it as far as the indoor programming. So once we're done the allocation at the rec centers, we're able to put in some public skating and some shinny, uh, and drop and pickleball, things like that. So I think you're right. Once we get um, that outdoor programmer on that, that, that'll be a task that we'll probably look at. Um, what I can say is a lot of our outdoors spaces, um, there's not a lot of leftover time. Uh, so now with new fields online, diamonds, we'll be able to take a look. There might be some more open spots for, um, yeah, outdoor rentals. Um, or programming opportunities for sure. So I think we're not quite there yet. We haven't really had the space to do that, but now we have space and we will have a staff member. So that definitely will be on our radar.
Yeah, imagine the lovely spot that we'd be in to be able to reach out to groups and say, hey, would, do you want more? Because we have room, right? So that'd be great. Um, second one, you kind of touched on there, uh, Amanda, uh, you know, the balance between city programming desires and long-term user group rentals remains a challenge in every municipality. Uh, Beaumont is not alone in that. But, um, you know, one of the things you, one of the things that I've heard back is a comment is that, you know, the long, the, the city programming desires may bring, uh, you know, five users to the space for that period of time. Whereas a user group who would be a paying rental may bring thirty-five users to that space. Yet the city programming desire persists and there's lower usage of the facility. You know, just to check that box for the city programming needs. Just wondering if you could speak to that a little bit to help residents understand, um, you know, how that gap is looked at from the administrative perspective. And the gap I'm referring to is the gap in how many people are using the facility, you know, whenever, you know, a rental group brings a lump of people. And then, you know, because the city programming is there, it only brings five people, you know.
Well, I, I will say, I don't think I've got that feedback. So please, please send that feedback in through City Works or through Guest Services. So we can get some of that feedback. Um, up until now, uh, like I said, we take a look at our allocation policy and then we'll typically put in our city programs. Uh, sometimes our programs will take some priorities. Um, I don't think we go too much in competition with space, but there may be some um, with things like, um, art classes, those kind of programs that we need a structured room. Um, so I, I can see where you're saying, I don't think we have a metric or any kind of measure in place right now to say, um, this user group will bring fifty people to the space and this, this class will bring ten people. So I, I would say I, I would love to see that feedback just so that I can understand where the challenges are. And then that way we can take a look and, and maybe it's something simple that we can reschedule on our end, um, different days of the week, maybe less prime times. Um, but yeah, I, I think it is all, it is quite a big balance, but the more feedback we get, the more that we can work towards it.
Yeah, bang on. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Before we go, uh, over to Council Miller, let me just put a, a plug in for the city programming and the, the need for that, uh, on the other side. Um, I, I mean, the gymnastics program, just as an example, right? I mean, trying to, trying to find space for that. You've got two and three-year-olds that are doing gymnastics at six forty-five PM and I, and that, that's pushing it in terms of timeline. So there, there is definitely a need for that. And, and the more we can, um, create that, the space for the city programming, which is a, a really affordable way to get, um, to get our youth involved. So I just, um, wanted to put a plug in for that. Uh, but, uh, Council Miller, I'll go for you.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm kind of going to piggyback off of what Council Ben Newenkirk said and just take it a little further, uh, when it comes to the user groups. My question is how, um, I guess, what is the process or policy on determining uh, which user group kind of? How do I, how do I put this? Get, has, say in, um, in how a facility or, um, an area, I guess, is, is built. And, and what I mean by that is if we have, uh, certain user groups, uh, such as we did with the West Recreation, um, Center, how, how is it determined that, um, it's going to fit, is it determined that it's going to fit everyone? And is it, um, determined on the, on the basis of bringing the most revenue being generated for the city? Or how is that decision made on, on, uh, the actual structure and layout of, of the plan?
I'll try and answer that one. Um, the master plan does talk about any capital projects that user groups, uh, and the community at large, of course, being integral to the engagement as far as developing what we're going to build there to make sure it's meeting their needs. Um, that is the process. Not everybody's obviously going to get what they want all the time. There's only so much space. We try to look at the bigger picture though and make something that's not so specific to one activity or one age group, for example, so that you could play multiple sports, multiple levels on it. That's the best bang for the buck for the community. They're engaged as far as they want to be engaged. I suppose we offer that opportunity to them. We, we look, we look at the gaps. We try and work with everyone as best we can when we're going through the design, uh, at concept stage for the West Rec, for example. Or any, any facility for that going forward. So everybody wants more, everybody wants bigger and better. And we fully appreciate that, but of course we're we're restricted by land, we're restricted by money, of course, at the end of the day. But we do look at the, where are the needs? Where are the pressures based on the user groups and their allotment and what their needs are? And then we bring that into the design piece to try and make the best, make the dollar stretch as far as it can to meet the needs so that everybody can play on those fields if, if at all possible. That, that's the intention at this point.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. I think, I think my, uh, you know, my kind of thought process further to that was that you know, is there, do we go above and beyond, uh, you know, kind of who the loudest voice is of user groups and really think about what's going to generate the most revenue, especially, you know, when it comes to the West Recreation, uh, facility. There can be a lot of revenue generated, um, from certain things such as slow pitch tournaments. Um, and I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, going forward, how we can make sure that we are better um, decision-making so that we can bring more, uh, revenue to the city. Um, I guess my, my second question is the, the schedule for the outdoor rinks. Um, I don't know if this is the right place to ask it, but is that implemented yet? And, uh, how is that, uh, been posted?
Yes, it is implemented, but I think Amanda can correct me. Maybe two days after we rolled it out, we had to close the ranks because of the weather. And I think it just reopened again, I think on the twelfth, a couple of days ago.
Yeah, I'm aware that they were closed. I'm just wondering, is the schedule posted there or is it just online or? Or has there been any, I, I haven't personally been out there yet, so I don't know if there's been any feedback on complications with the schedule being posted or anything.
I believe the schedules are all up. Uh, seeing that, I haven't attended, uh, went to those facilities either. So I, I trust my team got them all um, up that first week of February, but we can all always double check and make sure that they do get up if they're not. But I do believe it was posted online and implemented, yes, that first week of February.
Perfect. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Ash. Uh, Mayor, we're going for you, mate.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Paul, first of all, I want to just suggest that I'm very impressed with how are your department handled the construction of the artificial turf field and the West Recreation Center in a year where many contraction projects were facing shutdown, slowdowns in work, sick workers, that sort of thing. We actually got those two projects essentially completed, um, in, in, in a Tommy fashion. That was a credit to your department looking after those projects. Our contractors stepping up and giving us priority, uh, workers, that sort of thing. It was, it was very well done. And many people in the public were very impressed. We got the, got those projects done in, in a COVID year. The other areas were having trouble getting work done. So congratulations to that. I know in the last couple of years, as we've developed our rec facility, I know in the last couple of years, as we've developed our rec facilities, you know, people in Beaumont, they really like the recreational facilities. And that's probably the biggest touch point with administration is recreation facilities. There's so many user groups, adults and so on, seniors, that really appreciate what we're doing. And there are, there are always hiccups, there always will be. But on the whole, I think we've really upped our game the last couple of years with the rec facilities, and we're doing a good job continuing that. So so hats off to that. And one last little tidbit, I'm yet to tell council yet, or you, Paul, with the director of recreation. But the Artificial Turf Field will have its first high school football game ever in Beaumont. On Friday, September sixteenth. The the schedule's been laid now. I heard it from last week at the, at the High School Grand Opening. They set the schedule date, so two o'clock on Friday, September sixteen will be the very first high school football game in Beaumont on the new turf field. So that's a very exciting for us in Beaumont and for the high schools as well, too. And we'll talk more about that council down there. I got some ideas on that. We'll talk more about it. But great venue to to make that little small announcement that the schedule's been set. And it's going to be a very exciting day for us on that field. And it'll be used before that, of course, other user groups, but it'll have our, our first game. Be very exciting there. So again, Paul, recreation is a big part of Beaumont's life, our culture, our our residents, and you guys are doing a very good job. Overall with the recreation stuff. I'm looking forward to continuing with this council and doing rec facilities going forward. So thanks for all your work and twelve people in your department. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Bill. Sounds like you're on to another party there, mate. Good, good job. Appreciate that. I wanted to acknowledge just two things. One, Paul, your comment around the, the Performing Arts Steering Committee coming back to us shortly. Really looking forward to that. So thank you. You know, a lot of, a lot of focus here around the recreation piece, but but obviously that that arts piece as well is incredibly important. So looking forward to getting that update. I do have one quick question, and you may not have the answer here. With the Red Cross pulling out of the, the swimming lessons. Do we have a plan for that? Obviously, there's not just a Beaumont problem, but I wonder if Amanda had any thoughts on how we're managing that and.
Yes, we do have a start of a plan. So in January, January, Red Cross announced that they were stepping away from Learn to Swim program. So they are looking to put their attention more to the humanitarian. So all of us long-term Red Crossers, we're a little bit sad, but yes, we are jumping on board. And we're going to work with the Life Saving Society and Red Cross, so we're going to transition to Life Saving Society and Learn to Swim program. So those conversations have already started. And like you said, we're not alone in this. This is right across Canada. So both, both groups are setting us all up well to succeed. So our plan right now is come for September, so fall registration time. That's when we will be rolling out that transition. So swimming lessons in the fall will start with Life Saving Society. So our last set of Red Cross lessons will be in the summer. Tentatively, we're expecting to start communications about July, beginning to mid-July to the public. So that everybody understands how that transition is going to look like. You know, there's going to be some changes, right, from a salamander and a whale to a level one and a level two. I do think it is going to be pretty easy to do that transition, and we will make sure staff get well-educated for that change. And prepare for that registration session that will happen in August.
Great. Thank you. And and sounds like you had more than just a start of a plan. That's a, a great effort. And and I was just finally getting used to Salamander versus Sea Turtle, and so now I have to figure it out all over again. But thank you for the update there on that one. Appreciate it. All right. I I don't see anyone else here with any questions, so I'll ask the, the clerk to to bring up a motion to to receive. This item for the is for information. Is there a councillor willing to make that motion? I see councillor, sorry, the mayor, Bill Danilak. So your hand go up there first, mate.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I move that the February fifty, twenty twenty-two Recreation Department Overview Report be received for information. Thank you.
Thank you. I tried to steal your title there for a second. Apologies. We'll call, call a vote on that one. That carries unanimously. Again, Paul and and team, thank you very much for for coming here. These updates are really informative. And, you know, sometimes we dive into the weeds, but we get excited when you're in front of us. So thanks for the background information.
Thank you.
Alrighty, that moves us over to. Item five, councillor inquiries. You'll note here that there is a councillor inquiry there for councillor Tessier's. Piece for information, so we don't need to dive into that. That's there. But does any other councillor have any inquiry here this evening? Seeing none, last chance. Okay, that brings us to item number six, adjournment. So I will call a close to this meeting at seven forty-four PM. Thanks very much, everyone. Have a good evening.